July 9th, for the city council.
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion second for the agenda?
Need to make a change of the agenda, correct?
Yeah, I need a motion second.
Oh, before that, okay. All motion. I'll second.
Yeah, I have a temporary payment for a raffle at the Magnus to be held on 9/7/24.
So is that like F1? Does that work?
Yes, please.
And it's a gambling permit for Magnus. Any other changes? All right, motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero. Consent. I need a motion second.
I'll make the motion, but I want to pull C out and do it on its own.
Um, well then we need to back that out, all right? Because you might be voting against it?
I'm gonna abstain from it. I'll tell you why.
Okay, well then we need to make an agenda.
So you just motioned that you're approving A, B, and then C for F1?
Yep.
Okay, we'll put C as separate.
Yeah, we can do that right after the consent agenda.
After F1 or whatever, yeah. Okay, with that change, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
I had one question. On the payment claims, we had, well, a number of payments to elders. And one was regarding a discussion related to utility TIF. Is that, was that related to the conversation we're gonna have around territorial road and those utility?
That is correct. That is correct.
That was all I had.
I had a question on the Fogseal.
Do you want to have that during that discussion item because it sees moved out of the consent agenda?
Oh, whoops, yep. I had nothing. Anything else? Anybody got anything else? Okay, we got a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Consent. The amendment passes at zero. And then we are on item C. Need a motion second.
Almost.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
The reason that I am going to abstain, I'm gonna tell you guys. I am gonna contact this company and have them do my driveway at the same time. I've been planning it ever since we went and looked at all the... I just don't want no...
You're so sold on shipping Fogseal now that you're gonna do your own driveway? That's a big ship. I mean, I'm not knocking. I think it's great. I'm just saying that's a big buy-in to the part. It's a good thing. Awesome.
It's okay.
I agree.
It's gonna last me longer than it does you, though.
That is true. So the big doubt here was a unit price.
Huge.
Material. I guess my concern is always that, hey, we're not specing these correctly, but I suspect we did because one company... Did they just not want to bid? Is that how this works or what is going on?
We didn't ask, but yeah, it was significant, like over double.
Yeah, and it was just for that one... And it was material. It wasn't even labor.
Yeah, it might have just been that they padded that amount. This often happens, especially, we did bid it kind of late in the year. We would have typically bid this a month or two earlier when their schedules are kind of booked up.
Okay.
To me, it's probably an indication that one of these companies is still looking for more work. The other one probably has plenty.
Okay. Yeah, they can. We've heard this story many times before. Anybody have anything else? Okay, got a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Item C.
I'm gonna abstain.
You abstain. Carries four to zero. Onto open forum. Is anybody here for open forum? Anybody online for open forum? You are here for open forum? Okay, limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. State your name and address. No council action will be taken and items will be referred back to staff.
Anthony Albright, 14101 Berkshire Lane North. Two council sessions ago, the council talked about Zoom AI transcription for council meeting minutes. I wanted to support the idea that that should go forward. One of the council's objections to AI transcription was that you may not be able to discern between the voices and the transcript. And there is a solution to that, and that is that each of the council members has their own device that they're joined the meeting with. And that will separate out the voices in the transcript as long as the council members can remember to mute and unmute themselves. So I wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that functionality. I use it constantly at work. And we use it for our records, for transcription at Infinite Campus. So I wanted to, you know, bring that to the council's attention in case that wasn't clear, so that you have that as an avenue for cost savings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody online?
I do not have anyone.
All right, I'm gonna close open forum. Staff, consult, and council updates.
Yep. Good evening, mayor, members of council. I want to let you guys know that I'll be out of the office next week, all week. Anything? Good luck. You can reach out to department heads or to Amy in my absence if you need anything. We are working through the federal grant items that are needed to re-secure the funding for the Wellhead Treatment Plant. There has been a holdup with SHPO, which we are working through currently. And I had an email today that says that they're trying to figure out what SHPO's big holdup is. Essentially, they don't want to make a determination on the, for whatever reason, I'm unsure.
I don't know which one of the Marx Brothers that...
Yeah, like... SHPO is the State Historical Preservation Office, so they are the last step before actually getting it approved by the federal government.
And they don't know what to do.
And they don't want to make a determination on the project.
Do they have that option?
Yes.
Don't they have like a 60-day rule?
They do, and that's what they took all of their 30 days, and then they said at the last day, we don't even, we don't want to make a determination, so it's back in. We are still in the works. We're still figuring it out. We're trying our best to keep moving forward. Hopefully, I have a call tomorrow with Santex Group. Jason's been on the calls with us so far. Everything's good on the federal level. It's just SHPO, State Historical Preservation Office, that is holding up the process right now, so.
And they did have a 30-day rule?
They had a 30-day window. They took their entire 30 days. On the last day, they said, "We don't want to make a determination. Thank you very much."
What does that mean?
That means they just said, "We don't want to do anything. We're gonna pass, and you can figure it out with the federal government."
Because the federal government has their version of SHPO.
So they have their federal government, which I cannot remember the acronym for. But essentially, that one has a 60 to 90-day window for a response back, so we're trying to get State Historical Preservation Office to give a determination.
Do we get more government in our...
I'll tell you, it's about as fun as it can ever be. And then the last thing is, it was mentioned at the last meeting that we don't have the new state flag. It was ordered at the last meeting after it, but it will not be received until July 15th. So that's why it's not hung at tonight's meeting.
All right.
Take it off your list of things that, but that's why it's not hung is because it doesn't get here till next week. We'll hang it up as soon as we get it. That's all I got.
Okay. Thank Amy.
So as a reminder, the August 13th is the primary election. And so that council meeting is gonna happen on the 12th, Monday. But we will also need to schedule a canvas meeting. That needs to happen two to three days after August 13th. So I need to know if we can get a quorum either that Thursday or Friday, so August 15th or 16th, and what time we can hold that meeting. It is very short. It's just a resolution canvassing the results and then...
What was the...
Well, this one we usually do in the really early in the morning, pop in real quick and do it.
We have, yeah.
If you do it at, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but if you do it at 7:00 in the morning, I bet you I can make it.
Okay.
What day?
Early in the morning, yeah.
The 14th or 15th of August.
Is...
The week of the primary.
What a night meeting, Mark. I don't have childcare until...
I'd have to really look.
I could probably get here at 7:00 if we need to. I could probably get here at 7:00.
I just know my mornings. I can usually sneak in for a little bit, do a quick...
Yeah, yeah.
Those two days? The same two days in the evening?
We just need one that works for a quorum.
Yeah. Yeah, I could...
I can have everything ready and you can just...
I can get back here.
Evening or morning?
I guess either. Either one.
For sure evening, either one, or for sure morning, either one, for sure evenings, any of the other two to weigh in.
I don't want to commit.
Yeah, you got 30 days to...
Morning thing are pretty easy.
For sure.
A morning one, okay. So...
Just do a 7:00 AM then. On one of those two days doesn't matter.
Thursday or Friday?
Which one works easier for...
Friday works easier.
Friday's the best.
Okay. Friday works at 7:00.
So we'll go August 16th, 7:00 AM, Friday for the canvas.
You got it. Pete?
Thank you.
All right. I gave most of my update in the previous meeting, but one item. We found out recently that the streetlights on Territorial Road down by Semstone had had all the copper wire stolen from the pole run down there. It's 10 lights. It's considered really heavy gauge copper wire. The replacement cost is $60,000.
Hey. And do we have insurance?
We don't have insurance for that kind of stuff. We're self-insured.
We have insurance. They will not cover.
They mean they won't cover theft?
No, they will not cover the transmission lines, don't they?
Cover the wires in the pole, but not between the poles?
You got it.
And can we get insurance to cover between the poles?
Technically, we could, but the coverage is only... I don't remember the numbers, but essentially, we would have to pay $50,000 of the $60,000 because only 10% would be covered. So at this point, it was a new point.
Well, I'm not worried about this. I'm worried about future ones in general.
But for future ones, so the additional cost of the premium, I don't think outweighs the...
So context.
This is for the light?
Yes.
How does wiring for lights cost $60,000?
It's the gauge of the wire.
Right.
So it doesn't, the power doesn't deteriorate along the run, so they have to have a thick gauge to start it and run it down there. And that's the cost.
How the heck does that not leave the person sitting there when they cut the wire?
Say again.
He wants to know if the person got it and didn't die.
There's probably a gang of them doing it. Well, yeah.
Well, if they did it, then they just got electrocuted. That's it.
There's people doing this all over. They do it in St. Paul and...
How long does it take to take the wires out of 10 poles?
I don't know.
It's a great question.
You ever try to get it?
I haven't tried it, but I'm thinking about it.
There's no cameras around?
They just dug them out of the ground?
Yeah, it's nothing. Down there, I mean, you access the, there's a plate that you open up, going there, cut the wires.
Tell everyone how to do it. This is good. This is good. This is good.
It's in conduit and they can pull it out.
And then they'll just spool it there and put it on the back of the pickup and off you go.
So are we looking at getting like better locks or security for the base of those poles as part of the replacement or what?
You've got the maintenance access that you need to have to check wiring or replace wiring in the pole itself.
I get that, yeah.
That's what that's there for. What we're looking at doing is putting a stainless steel band around it and primping that really tight. But that's not to say that they can't get through and cut through it or whatever. So, yeah, the deterrence is minimal. The other thing that you can do is leave the lights on all the time, so they're powered all the time. So that makes it more difficult for them to cut through the live wires.
Are they LED lights? Are they LED lights?
Not currently. If we did, we would upgrade it to LED lights, which is not, that'd be about $7,000.
Can you move the maintenance spot, like plate, up? Like, just get it out of reach?
Not really, no, because then you gotta add more copper wire to get up to the maintenance wire and then back down out and carry it along.
So if we do move to the LED, is this a electrical code problem? Because then you should be able to drop the gauge dramatically.
It could be that if we put LEDs, that might be an opportunity.
Okay, because then it shouldn't be 60 grand. I don't know. This is kind of dumbness. I don't even know how you deal with something like...
Without, I mean, how do you prevent it from happening again?
Yeah.
You just put it back in and it's just like, oh, here you go, more.
That's my concern is, I think we should fix the lights. When we fix the lights, they know they can get them. They know when they can get them. They know how to do it, and they just come rip it all out again, and then we're just basically feeding them money. And if we don't have anything to deter or stop them, I don't know, I just feel like we're setting ourselves up.
Yeah, the only thing I think is it's the opportunity to look at, you know, the cost difference between the gauge of the wire and the cost of the LED fixtures.
And aluminum, you can switch to that, too. I don't, they're not stealing aluminum, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, we're just babbling up here, but it's just...
How can you lock the wire in?
I can talk with the contractor and get some other options about, you know, if we can replace it with aluminum wire, if that makes sense. Or if it's a lighter gauge that we can put in there to reduce the cost.
Well, I would hope like they could put like an extra loop in the box that would deter them from pulling the wire through that would, you know, loop around something. I mean, there's gotta be engineering aspects that, you know, kind of close those loops.
I mean, he's been working with this in several places and, you know, the contractor that I'm using. And he hasn't got a great solution for it at this time. All he can try and do is deter them from doing it.
Can't you hook a direct line to about 5,000 volts?
To the pole itself?
Touch the pole and you're done.
All right. You have any other good news?
More good news, Mark?
All right, Carrie.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. I've been able to locate a resting place for Engine 11, old Engine 11. I don't have all the specifics. I'll have it on next council. But it sounds like Ukraine would like the engine to use in one of their fire departments. Currently, they have about 2,000 firefighters that would ultimately end up in a rural department over in Ukraine. This is through one of the nonprofits here in the states, and they have all the shipping and everything scheduled to ship it out and over there. But I'll have more specifics from the gentleman I spoke to today for next council session.
That can't be cheap.
Cheaper than your engine.
Government's paying for that.
Evening, mayor, members of the council. Just two things. We had two compliance reviews. One was hazardous waste generator compliance review, and then my post-board review, which is done every three years, and we have passed both of them.
John?
August 1st, I'm wondering if the council's available for a workshop on the master plan.
No.
No.
Likely not.
It's a Thursday night.
Thursday.
No.
What is that? So that's two hours.
Prime soccer season.
Prime soccer season. So we'll reach out during the weekly updates to coordinate some different options.
Is this with the planning commission? Is that, okay. You know, we have two meetings a month. I know they have one, but we have two. They're welcome to come to one of ours on Tuesday.
We have some planning commissioners that have conflicts on the same night as that one.
Hi.
I don't have any updates.
Amy?
Just real quickly, and staff may already know about this. I just haven't had a chance to check in with them. The Office of Cannabis Management has issued some updated information and model ordinance, some things that'll be useful to the city. One of the things that's kind of makes this a little bit more of an urgent issue is the fact that they are allowing for cultivation to start ahead of everything else yet this year. For some people, I don't know, we did have a conversation with staff. One of my colleagues, who is far more expert at this cannabis stuff than I am, we met with staff. And so one of the things to really focus on is making sure that the zoning ordinance is up to date and ready to go. The Office of Cannabis Management is not super clear on timing, but approximately August 12th is when they think they're gonna be, is kind of a date that, you know, is a benchmark to try to meet. So to date, I know the city council hasn't adopted a moratorium ordinance. But that is an option to buy some time for controlling any of these, any of the aspects of cannabis, including cultivation, through at least January 1st of 2025. It's not too late if you wanted to consider doing that. So I can keep working with staff on it, but it's just, it kind of came out just in the last week or so. And it seems like it's really kind of going full steam ahead.
Just for clarity, when you say cultivation, you mean like residents at home or like the dean's converting a farm to cannabis? What can I call, or both?
How big of an operation?
Yeah.
Well, there's, that's not a simple question, but, or not a simple answer. But it is mostly cultivation, not by individuals, but on a mass scale.
Okay.
My understanding from one of my colleagues, the one we met with staff with, is that the, like in Elk River, they've had a tour of a facility somewhere, I think. And it's really more like industrial than just somebody opening up a field.
Yeah.
So it's more like, you know, working in a chemistry lab where, you know, put on your, all your gear. And it's not really farming in a traditional sense.
I thought, weren't they, I thought these were controlled via, are these not the lottery aspects?
That's for retail, as I understand it. That's for sales.
So the providers?
I can transmit to staff the information that came out from the Office of Cannabis Management, and we can continue to work on. I just wanted to bring it to your attention in case you wanted to consider a moratorium. Because it's, you do still have the ability to do that if you want to have time, a little more time to think about how you want to proceed.
Do we have them turning into...
You don't have to, but it is an option.
Do we, is our ordinance currently take into account this kind of process at all? I know we have one at all. We had one for where you could smoke it, but we don't have one.
We have, yeah. We have one for smoking it, and that's it.
Nothing for production?
No, thank you. So probably should put something together.
It should be extended out then, for sure. I mean, if they came out with it a week ago and then we already got to have a deal by the 12th, it's government for you.
Well, I would say that a lot of cities have put it, they put the moratorium in place like last year. Not everybody did. And, you know, it wasn't required. It's just, you know, and you still don't have to even now if you don't want to. It's just an option that you have to kind of make your, to, you know, have a more deliberative process about how you want to...
Do we have a zone where that would, I'm just trying to think, if we don't have the moratorium, and we have a zone where someone wanted to, that they'd have to come in and get a zoning change?
Nope, we don't have that.
Nope.
There's like, there's like nothing, so.
So they could just do it without asking, or they have to come in and get, it's not listed, so they have to come in and get approval to do it? Like, where do they sit up?
We'd probably look at it as somewhere to manufacturing use.
Okay.
So you wouldn't even need a permit.
All right, I'm not too worried about, I'm more, I'm worried about the aspect that Paul's gonna have to deal with.
Yeah.
That's the problem. That's where the problem is. I couldn't care less if somebody makes the stuff.
City staff is working on stuff with Amy, so just time. I know John's working on it, heading the process.
It won't be done by August 12th, so is there an interest in a moratorium?
Until January 1.
It would go through January 1st of 2025.
So we can understand it. I'd like to, yeah. So I don't feel like August 12th is...
I don't, I don't, I don't have a...
Well, we got one.
I think staff suggests one, just so that we can be aware of and have an application process.
Is there any reason not to?
Think of any. I don't think this thing's getting rolling as quick as people are worried about, but...
That's probably true.
When it is rolling, it's...
Has anybody approached the city about doing this?
We did have one. Did you, I thought we had one that looked at and said, "Hey," and then I don't think they, they didn't go any further than call, I think. That was it.
Just verbally?
Yeah, just verbally, a call. That was it.
That's more than nothing. Well, I don't, I don't care.
I'm on the fence. I mean, I could go either way, too. It's like, I'm with you. My biggest concern is the... The policy of it, and I just want to make sure that this doesn't all of a sudden pop up in like an R1 district or an R2 district. Like, my concern is, is that if it's gonna happen, it happens in what I would say are the correct places for it to happen, which is, you know, in the right zone. But it sounds like right now, we don't have anything that even says what the right zone is.
Right. So is there an interest in a moratorium?
So I guess that's my only concern is, right now, someone could in R1 district come and try to do it.
That's what I'm saying. It kind of leaned towards like...
Because it's not, it's not assigned to a zoning district. That's my only concern, not that it's happening, but that it happens in the right zone.
Well, that's the simplest solution for now.
Moratorium is a simple solution.
Yeah.
I, it buys us time to have a...
Okay, then, well, so...
Where are you at, Dave?
Yeah, I guess I'm okay with the moratorium. I think it's low risk. You know, that it would, something would happen in that timeframe, but so...
John, can you put something together?
Yeah, because this would be a public hearing, so.
It would be, yeah. And we do have, there's a model moratorium ordinance that the League of Minnesota Cities put together. A lot of cities have adopted.
So you'll see it on August 12th?
Yeah, we can, we can put that together. I can work with John on that. That's all I have.
August 12th is the council meeting.
Travis? Nothing.
I have nothing. Dave?
Nothing for me.
Matt?
I have a couple of things. So one of those brought to me a while ago, but it's kind of beginning to loom. I know franchise fees is an interesting topic to talk about at all. But franchise fees specific to ag property, so there was a, my understanding is from talking to the farmers, and I think Zach, you verified some of this, too, but the way the law was changed right now, up until this year, the farmers, a lot of the farmers from the ag space have an extra hookup for their gas. It's a high-volume gas that, it's extremely expensive monthly. They pay for it for about two months and they lock out for the other 12 months of the year. This fall, they won't be able to lock out again. Because of the law that was changed, they can't shut off. They were told this. They, a couple of them came to me. I went to Zach. Zach, you confirmed this, correct? So...
And recharge the higher meter.
Yeah, so it's based on the size of the meter, not based on the usage of it.
And you've checked, we can, we can control the franchise fees specific to ag. So we could either say, well, in the past two months' cost, I'm just gonna pick a number, $500. So instead of charging, so $2.50 a month, so $500 total for two months, we just split that 500 over 12 months and get the same amount of revenue. Or we just say, "We're not gonna charge franchise fees on ag space." I mean, if we want to continue to promote rural feel, this is a significant cost that will hit the farmers.
Yeah.
And we have the control to help mitigate that. And so I'm not saying we have to solve it today, but it is some, is anyone else interested in trying to solve this problem or see it as a problem? Or am I the only one that sees this particular piece? This is something that's solvable without impacting city revenue?
I don't think we're looking, that we're trying to squeeze more revenue out of the franchise fee.
To test the thing anyway, so.
Right. And, you know, I don't know. I'm stuck with it. We are overall, but we, I, I feel like, you know, this is a twist that wasn't anticipated when it was put in place, and so we should fix it.
Okay. So how did we mechanically, how do we mechanically do that? Did we just two months of the year?
So it's charged, yep, so it's charged based on the size of the meter. It doesn't matter if it's ag or commercial or residential. It's based on the size of the meter, and it's a per-month charge.
Right.
So CenterPoint, who handles all of the gas, would, then if the account was active, as in the farmers need it, it would then turn active, and once it turns active, then they get charged the franchise fee.
Oh, so they handle it?
Yeah, CenterPoint handles it, and then they just send us the revenue. That's it. So when it's active, before, they would just be active for those two months, and then they would lock out, and they would go inactive, and they would not be charged that fee while they're inactive.
So, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
But in those size meters, there's, these are substantial.
Correct, yeah. They're, yeah. $4 for a residential one versus, I think it's $2.50 or $300 for the size that we're talking, related to the dryers that the...
It has to be with corn harvest.
Yeah, the corn dryers. Yep, exactly.
Corn, soybean.
I think there's roughly five or six meters like this, just an FYI, so you guys know the number of them. We would look specifically at the ag ones only, though, not based on a size. So we would specifically call out ag, and you can do that in the franchise fee.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess if it's revenue, it'll show, I'm fine.
Yeah. So can staff come with, come?
Yeah, we'll update with our ordinance.
Perfect. Thank you. The other question is, back in the day, when I was a kid, we used to have like a pet shop clinic every year. You come and get your rabies. You come and get your rabies. We stopped doing that. They're like super expensive to go on, I mean, just an office visit to see a vet these days is like 200 bucks. We have a lot of pets in the neighborhood. Any chance on bringing that back or why did we get rid of it or tell me more, I guess?
I don't know exactly why we got rid of it. I think part of the deal was with the vet's office also. And timing, so.
Cause I know when I lived in the Rapids, they did it too, still.
They also went to three-year rabies.
Yep.
So some years you'd get hardly anybody here if anybody.
I, I thought that's why they had kind of petered out because they just didn't get many people.
We didn't get any of it.
Even if we do it once every three years then, so we're like helping, I don't know. I feel like it's a public service we can offer that if it's not too much work to manage, I think it'd be good to get back on the.
We can talk, talk to the vet's office again and see, but that, I think the main reason was is the lack of people weren't, weren't coming anymore. So that's why we got rid of it.
Even though we've kind of had 3,000 dogs in this.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And lastly, I just want to say thank you, Magnus. I know I've reached out to a bunch of us. I reached back out to them and got a tour of the, the building there and more insight to what they do. And so just thank you very much for them for reaching out and keeping us and look what they got going on.
Okay. We are on to council business. Item G, Three Rivers District Park District update.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We have Kelly Grisman here.
Yep.
Up here from Three Rivers Park District, here to give a presentation. You can take it away, Kelly. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me okay or should I move this closer? We're good?
You're good.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members. My name is Kelly Grisman. I'm the Director of Planning with Three Rivers Park District. I've been here before and it's always a pleasure to come back. Today, Zach and I have been talking and John about just doing a quick kind of update and overview of all the things that Three Rivers is working on within your city and then answer any questions or concerns that you may have this evening. So with that, I'm going to jump right in and you are welcome to interrupt me with your questions. I'd much rather that you got what you needed or wanted out of the presentation than trying to just hold it all to the end. So just a quick snapshot as to some of the interesting things that your residents are doing within our parks. They have about 550 different annual passes from our swim ponds, dog off leash areas, boat trailers, our Alpine season pass. And then we have our RecPass Plus program that I just want to take a moment and kind of highlight. This is for households that maybe are economically disadvantaged. And they can just call Three Rivers or go online and get a RecPass Plus card. And then that gives them discounts or free access to equipment, reservations, programs, camps, et cetera. So anyone listening or any council members, if you know people that this might apply to, this is a great program. And within your community, there's 43 households that currently have the RecPass Plus card. And one of the things that we look at when we do our surveys, which are every five years, is how many residents do you have within Dayton compared to the greater suburban Hennepin County? And then we look at that percentage and we compare it to then the number of visits that we get from Dayton residents to our total visitations. And the good news is you are right on the mark for what we would expect for your portion of the population. Elm Creek, of course, is the most populated or the most popular park that your residents visit with 23,000 plus visits in the summer. And Rush Creek, the most, the closest regional trail, we get 500 summer visits. And the activity your residents like to do the most is hiking, walking and running. So looking at Elm Creek Park Reserve, I'm going to assume that most people know all about Elm Creek since it is a pretty big landholding within the community and a very popular destination of your residents. But it offers everything from hiking and snow shoeing to cross-country skiing to Alpine skinnings. There is some snowmobiling, there's a dog off leash area. It's over 5,000 acres. And it is a park that it is, that we continue to reinvest in. And some of the things we have in our next five-year plan is to really do all the pavement micro surfing or, micro surfacing or reconstruction, similar to how you guys maintain your roads here within Dayton. We do the same thing for our park trails, our park roads and our parking lots. So I think almost all the pavement in the park is scheduled for either maintenance or reconstruction over the next five years.
Is there a plan online or someplace? I bike in that park quite often and am running into road closed signs.
Within the park you are?
Within the park, yeah.
Yeah, it should all be online, but definitely feel free. I have my email at the end of this that if you're not finding what you're looking for, I'd be happy to find it and then get back to you with that information. Cause some of this stuff is happening sooner than later and then some of it's not for another three to four years, so. And I just don't have the specifics today of this is happening in the north end, you know, this year and this is in the south end at this year. Part of the future investments are replacing three trail bridges. We're going to do a new overhead trailhead parking lot by the nature center, kind of in the west center portion of the park. ADA improvements throughout the park and kind of tied to any pavement improvements, similar to what I heard you guys talking about earlier. We also are obligation, obligated to do all of those when we touch any of the pavement surfaces, so we're going to be doing that. And then within our winter recreation area, looking at new outdoor lighting, replacing the rough on the chalet. It's just kind of at the end of its useful life. And then tubing hill conveyor replacement, similar, you know, it's functional for so long and then things start to not work so well. And we like to replace things before it gets to the point of no return. And then looking at mountain bike parking lot expansion, probably in the next five years as well. So moving on to regional trails, which is probably the number one growing thing that we have throughout our entire system. And when we look at the city of Dayton, we have about 20 miles, a little less than 20 miles envisioned for your community. And the interesting thing, when I was just looking at your website today, something that struck me is we're right here. That's one of your taglines and it talks about the connections to natural resources. We've got roots and it talks about the sense of connection and deep ties to history and heritage. When we play outside, it talks about parks, trails and rivers and the opportunity to immerse yourself in nature. All three of those things really align well with our vision for the regional trail system in your community and that these would be destination regional trails and that they would be tied to your natural resources and provide community members an opportunity to connect with them, experience them and, and to preserve them from now and into the future. So the five regional, excuse me, the four regional trails within your community is the West Mississippi River Regional Trail. Of course, that follows the river. The Diamond Lake Regional Trail, it's on the west side and runs north-south. The Rush Creek Regional Trail on the south side of the community, just really ties in very, just the very, very south border between Elm Creek Park Reserve and kind of like the Brackton Lane area. And then the Medicine Lake Regional Trail, we also call that the Elm Creek Connector. But that's that connection between the river corridor to Elm Creek. And some of the, the trail we worked with, the city or the city worked with Three Rivers to implement along Pine View as well as in the River Hills development.
Wouldn't you think that, so there's a connection needed between Pine View and River Hills?
Yeah.
Is there a timeline for when you guys plan on doing that?
Yeah, I'll skip to that slide. So this is the piece that you're talking about, the Medicine Lake Regional Trail connection or extent, expansion. The north end through River Hills is already done, so that's shown on red. And then the south end, up Pine View and then just a touchdown south Diamond Lake Road is also in place. So that gap between essentially north and south Diamond Lakes is what remains. And that's really going to be tied to development, especially for the piece that's proper between the roads that runs north-south because that's all privately owned land and, and we're kind of subject to willing sellers and we're subject to the timing of development. So when, when that gets developed, we would like to work with the city and the developer to secure an outlet to, to run that regional trail. And then the pieces along the roads really would be subject, if you guys are going to be doing a road project, we'd like to partner with you or we get that other connection, so we've got a continuous corridor. Does that answer your question satisfactory?
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, I have one more question. How do you guys plan on getting, are you going to go under or over? How are you going to handle north and like?
To be determined. Yep, but usually if it's a major road, we would try to do it at an intersection. If crossing that grade without a controlled feature like, should it be signalized we look at? Or is just signage okay? And then we would start looking at the grade separated stuff.
Thank you.
Kelly, do you look at any of that private property now and, and talk to any of them landowners?
You know, we haven't been super proactive on this quarter. That's something we could definitely talk to the city. We did do a long-range planning, our master plan several years ago and worked with the community members at, at that time. So people that owned land then definitely knew that this was an area of interest. But we haven't extended a, a letter or phone call to anyone currently. And, and sometimes we don't do, we don't take a proactive approach based on the, how much money we have in our acquisition account. Or if we think it's going to do more harm than good, where all of a sudden, community members get very excited and they think that this is happening tomorrow when that's not the case. So there's some, some really thoughtful messaging and then making sure the council's really informed so that you'll, you'll field calls and we would want you to know that, no, we're just out here if you want to sell. But as you talk to your residents, if you know people that are interested, by all means, feel free to send them our way. We'd love to work with them.
Cause there's three people that, that could connect that whole thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at too, is like, there's only three families that really prevent that from happening.
And that would solve our other issue too.
With the trail we were talking about earlier? That's why I asked, when I saw the line, I was like, okay. So the question I guess is, and maybe we can take this offline, but something to go back with is if, if the city could secure that land for that trail, how quickly would you guys put the trail in?
That's a good question. I, we don't, yeah, we don't have it in our CIP. Our CIP is a five-year thing. We definitely like to work in partnership with community and when there's an opportunity to, to kind of like strike when the iron's hot, we, we like to do that. We also though use a lot of federal funds to build our trail infrastructure. And right now, the way the regional solicitation process works through the Met Council, this area would not score well and be very difficult to get funding through that mechanism, which we're working very hard to get that update in to reflect more of the rural and the development communities within Hennepin County and beyond. But right now it's skewed very heavily towards more urban areas and so.
So you just shot, you just shot a hole right in the balloon.
As the city is doing.
How do you, so you were talking about putting this into a CIP, except whenever a house goes up for sale, you guys seem to have the cash for that.
Yeah, it's a different funding program and the Met Council actually provides us 75% matched for acquisitions.
It's whether or not they want to do it.
The county's answered.
Different grant sources, different processes altogether. And we, we couldn't move forward with construction without the land rights in place anyways. Similar to this council, we really don't want to be exploring condemnation in any way, shape or form either. So we're really subject to where there's existing public right away or where there's willing.
I won't make the call in that case.
It just seems like now would be a very cheap time to be doing that because, oh, for a number of reasons, but.
Well, part of that path was on South Diamond and we're redoing South Diamond next year, right? Or we're going to mail it over to South Diamond?
Overlay it, not mailing it overly. Overly.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so the West Mississippi River Regional Trail, as you mentioned, we've been buying quite a bit of property along the river corridor. And it's really trying to create a greenway space and make the river more publicly available as an asset to the community and the region. So people can actually access the Mississippi River, whether it's just for, for viewing or for recreation such as fishing, kayaking, boating, et cetera. Right now, when we look at the whole river corridor in suburban Hennepin County, there's actually very few places for community members to go and access the river. And Dayton has one of the most pristine river pieces left that feels very natural and wild. And the, between the A and the B on this map, which is roughly from the Gooden Island area to North Diamond Lake Road, for most of that, it's just one parcel between the road and the river. So that's an area that we're keenly interested in. It's also happens to be, as you guys also found out, suddenly a high priority for Hennepin County to reconstruct the Dayton River Road. And we would like to work in partnership with them to build the trail and get that all done and assembled at one time. So that caught us by surprise and that is something we're looking at plugging into our CIP. I know there's been some conversations about who pays for what, but as a regional trail and we have a long-range plan with, that the city has adopted and I, I believe we even have an, yeah, we have an agreement even for this. So the costs associated with the trails are, would be the cost borne by Three Rivers. The, the city should not be on the hook for the trail portions of any of those road projects.
So between now and '29, the county's planning on redoing all that. So you're saying between now and '29, you think that, that trail will go the, between A and B?
Um, nah, no, past.
It doesn't go south of B, I think.
It does go south of B. It will go south of B, but it will not go north of.
I'm going to ask Jason, maybe he can pull up the map.
What's the road that's, the dirt road right on Laurel Tree Farms? Vicksburg. It will not go north of Vicksburg because that has not been identified as a number of year yet. The county's still trying to figure out what year they're going to do.
So it's like halfway between A and B to be.
I will say that we are all learning information rather rapidly. And I have seen maps that had say to be determined, but then had conversations where they told me dates.
So you guys get surprised by the county too, huh?
Yeah, and we work very closely with them, but I think they got a whole lot of money and now they're looking at spending it. And there's been communities throughout Hennepin County forever that have said, hey, where's our piece, where's our piece? And then they got money and now they're here and you're like, oh no, like we didn't plan and anticipate it. So it, it's a really good thing to have that investment. It also puts a lot of communities in a really tough situation because the cost participation policy, not every community is in a financial position to afford it.
Cause we pay county taxes and we have your city taxes to pay for county roads. Wherever.
I'm not going to comment for that.
So I'm, I'm curious or confused actually because of the number of properties that have been purchased along the river road. And full disclosure, I live on the Lip River Road. But what I'm confused, where I get a little bit confused, is the goal to, to own all of the river between A and C? Or is it just touch points along there?
I think if, if there's an opportunity and there's willing sellers to secure that all and make it an open space and to work with the community and the city to think about what are your local needs and how do we tie that in? And what are the regional needs and how do we tie that in? And it becomes one solid greenway. And we're thinking 50 years out. To me, that makes sense and to Three Rivers, that makes sense. We're not looking at doing this tomorrow. We really wait for the phone to ring. We have, with the exception of notifying a few residents, when we've purchased a property and we've let neighbors know, we're not actively out there knocking on doors, similar to the corridor we just talked about. People are very interested in selling and what we've learned is they're not very happy about the road and it's not even the condition of the road. It's the amount of traffic and the speed and there's no shoulder and the, many of the houses, not all of them, are so close that they don't want to live there anymore. And I think there's also some restrictions on this quarter. It's part of the Mississippi River critical habitat corridor. And so there's certain setbacks that people have to follow when they develop or redevelop their property. There's a lot of steep slopes, there's flood plains, there's wetlands. So you certainly can have houses on there. There are houses on all of those parcels or most of them. It's just a matter of if you're going to buy a new parcel or you're going to buy a parcel and build your dream home, are you going to do it on that road? And I think what the, some of the community members are finding is it makes more sense to sell to Three Rivers and move on than to improve their properties and try to sell it when the road condition is what it is.
So does, because not everybody's going to want to sell.
Yep, that's right.
Along that stretch and, and I think that's fine. I mean, good to hear that that's the, the 50-year plan, if you will. But does that prevent the trail from going through?
No, it doesn't. And I, I think that's a really good point and there are certain areas that we're going to need private easements or acquisition to make the trail work, whether it's just a little sliver, they call it a strip taking, I guess. Or there's a big ravine and we need to pull that, that trail farther off and kind of fix the ravine and maybe bridge it. There's a handful of those spots along this corridor where we absolutely know we need to have ravines. And some of the Dahlheimer properties that we bought probably seven years ago now are some of those. But in most cases, I think moving forward, they're truly just opportunities to, at a future date, have more open space and maybe pull the trail further. We won't be able to do that in the county's timeframe of having this big buffer between the road and the trail for most of the corridor. But when the trail gets reconstructed in 30 years, hopefully we'll have enough land that there's big stretches where as a trail user, you feel like you're having a linear park experience rather than biking or walking right adjacent to that road.
Okay, and one more question along the line. So one of the houses you purchased is abandoned.
Yep.
And sitting there, which isn't a good situation for us as a community.
Yep, so there's two houses that we recently acquired and one of them we use, it's called Better Futures. They used to have, I think, a tie to Hennepin County. I don't know if they still do. But it is a program that is dedicated to helping people that maybe are hard to employ or don't have a lot of employment skills. or don't have a lot of employment skills. And it teaches them about construction. So we worked with them and unfortunately, it just took so much longer than anticipated for them to mobilize and take care of the whole property. And then in the middle of that, we got all of the rain. And so it's taken us longer than anticipated to restore the property because the, I don't want to say that the slope is not stable, but is in a point where you wouldn't want to disrupt it because of how wet it is. And then the second parcel with the home on it, we are not using that program because of the condition of the house and the assets within the house. So that one, that demo will take just a few weeks from start to finish.
So if the house isn't repairable, you guys give her the house? There's not just a house up there?
Yeah, yeah. We always, our plan is to always do the demo. In one case, it just took an unacceptable length of time.
Yeah, that one seems to be, well, the house is down now.
Yep.
The other one looks terrible.
Yeah, the other one we purchased looking terrible. And then with our workload, we just timed it a certain way, but it is scheduled for removal this summer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on the West Mississippi River Regional Trail before I move on?
So yes, I've got one. And when we think maybe 50, 60 years out, I would say that everyone up here, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's longer than 50, 60, maybe it's 100 years. Let's just say 100 years.
Yep.
There will be a bridge, my guess is, across the river.
At some point, yeah.
Are you guys accounting for that in your plans of making sure that getting land from Three Rivers Park District is beyond difficult?
Is difficult, yep.
And I understand why. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but we all know what it's gonna go. I think we all have a general idea of where it's gonna go. And so my question is, is are you guys trying to acquire that land to make some play, to get seven times the land someplace else from somebody?
No.
Like, that's, I guess.
No.
And are you thinking about that with your trail?
I very much appreciate the concern because it's also incredibly painful for staff to have to go through that process. Zach and I can attest to, and Jason. We would like to avoid where there's that overlap at all possible. And it is a lot easier for us to not acquire land that another agency needs. And so if those land needs are known and well documented and there's agreement exactly where that's gonna happen, we would love to know about it and we can stay clear of it.
I'm no expert, but if you look at Highway 10 across the street in Armstrong, they've built that out, like they're ready for it. And I know Ramsey approaches us once a year to try to convince us all we need to build a bridge that I think up here, nobody up here wants right now, right now.
That's not just up here.
Well, I can only speak to people up here. I can't speak, you know, for everyone. So, but give us the conversations. I just, I think we know where it's gonna go.
We know where it's gonna go on their side. Armstrong is definitely where it's connected. But on our side, it could, it's hard to.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be, time view and it's not, you know, like, there's a general area it's gonna be. And I just want to make sure that we're not in a whole holding pond land swap situation 100 years from now that we didn't think.
Yeah, the other thing, I would imagine that that would not be a city bridge.
No.
No.
So just kind of hypothetically playing it out. In that case, the good news is you're not the one that would have to go through that very painful.
Yeah, but you said you guys don't like to go through that.
We didn't know.
Yeah.
No. And a matter of fact, often if we know about something like that and the city will need an easement or the county would need an easement and we're to expand the road, we'll actually, at closing, have them put those easements in place before we own it. It all kind of happens at the same time to avoid that exact thing.
And I think we, I think we asked for some of that on North Diamond and Dayton Road, that property, you guys just took quite there because.
Yeah, it came in too late, but we have, well, we kind of have a plan to work with you on that. Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. So then there's the Diamond Lake Regional Trail. That long-range plan was adopted not too long ago and we're working with a cooperative agreement or reviewing a cooperative agreement right now that would be in front of the council, hopefully in the next couple of months. Very similar in nature of, this is not a trail that we want to have right adjacent to the road. This is an area that's not yet developed or provides a great opportunity to try to secure open space as part of development so that you've got this linear park for your residents to use it and have some pretty good regional connections. Talked about this one. And then it's the Rush Creek Regional Trail Corridor. This one is similar, in my opinion, to the West Mississippi River Regional Trail in that there's been a lot of land acquisition. I just am showing a small piece of this trail, the portion that kind of goes through Dayton. It's hard to see on here, but the Dayton boundary is that little black dash line. So the trail kind of just comes up into Dayton in a few places. And then all those red asterisks are parcels that we've recently purchased. And so similar, we're trying to assemble all the land rights. Once we have the land rights, we'll be trying to secure funding to put that trail in place as well.
So I've got another question for you. At 81 and Territorial?
Yeah.
How do you all plan to get people across that?
An underpass.
You're getting an underpass?
Yep. So you guys were very thoughtful in your planning that you preserved some extra right-of-way and you would like to realign the road to T and at a 90-degree, which provides us an opportunity to do an underpass. We just have to be really careful about, there's some pretty significant utilities that we have to further review and coordinate with. We don't have, like, plans in place. We've done some napkin sketches to sort of make sure that it all works. And our staff is confident that when that intersection is redone, we can all work together with the county to get all that infrastructure in place at the same time.
So given that you need that intersection redone to do that, are you willing to partner with us in the cost of redoing the intersection?
We'd be willing to do the cost of the underpass. We don't have trails.
That's not what you want.
That's not, I mean, you can't do it till we realign the road.
I hear you.
So like, if it's beneficial for you.
We also don't have any trail construction planned in this area, so the urgency is different for us at the moment.
Okay.
Worth a shot.
Yep, I don't blame you for trying. One of the things that John and Zach have shared with me is like some concern about all the land that Three Rivers is interested in acquiring in some way, shape, or form. And I think every community is, that's a responsible thing to be looking at, is what does this really look like? How does it change our community? Is that what we want for our community? What's the impact then on balancing our own budget? And one of the, certainly, you can go online and you can look at research and you can find research, I'm kind of using air quotations, that tell you whatever story you want to find. The research that I found and looked into a little bit more in-depth about their methodology and really looking at similar situations to the work that Three Rivers does, really, whatever loss of tax revenue you have by land that Three Rivers is acquiring is made up by the increase of property values of those adjacent and nearby properties. And in some cases, like this research here shows an increase of 15 to 32% of those properties that are adjacent or nearby. And the other thing is thinking about making Dayton a desirable place to live, where it can play. People want to live and they want to move close to or within communities that have a lot of amenities. And one of those, or some of the amenities they want are parks and trails and open space. And so there's a lot of research by realtors that also talk about, you can, that raises property values, you can sell your home for more. Many people are looking to buy houses close to trails, et cetera. And so again, I just wanted to say, I think that that's really thoughtful, you're thinking about it. And we can share some numbers if you're interested, at least what we think some of the tax revenue might be lost, at least on the West Mississippi. But in general, I think it kind of balances itself out over time. And one of the other things Three Rivers does, when we buy a piece of property, we do a one-time payment of 180% of the local tax revenue to the city. So if it's about, if you're collecting $1,000 of taxes on the property right now, we would write you a check then for 1,800 to help transition that property off of your tax rules. I understand that that's not a perfect or long-term solution necessarily, but it is supposed to help kind of ease that burden and so you can anticipate and plan for it.
How'd you land on 180% or 190%?
It had to do with transitioning like 80% one year, 60% one year, 40% the next year. And when you added all those percentages up, it added up to be 180%. And it's just a lot easier to do it in one transaction, so neither party is forgetting about it, than remembering every year for five years or four years. You need to write a check.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's actually, I can't recall if that's state statute or a Met Council.
I was gonna say that, sounds like some edict somewhere.
I believe it's state statute, not a Met Council, I'm worried. And then also, parks have benefits and trails have benefits beyond just property values and desirable places to live. It's, people are more active, they have more recreation opportunities, they live longer because of it, they're healthier. I don't think I'm telling you anything you don't know already, but I just wanted to kind of pause and kind of reflect back to those three slogans that you have on your website, that I think it really kind of all aligns, even though sometimes change can be hard. I think we have a very common shared vision and it's just a matter of how we work together to implement it. So with that, I will stand for any questions or concerns or additional discussion.
I'm good.
Mayor? Anybody else? Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So you have the current property, I believe you have a demo permit on it. Is there an opportunity to work with fire department to utilize that property?
Absolutely. Well, I should double check. Moving forward, absolutely, if this one is already under contract, we might not be able to do it.
Sure, okay.
But I'd be happy to follow up and, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great rest of your night.
You too.
Okay, on to item H, pavement management dollars.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. With the chip and fog seal, we have completed our projects for 2024 that were assigned or essentially were planned for. And we still have some remaining dollars left. This was provided to you in the packet. 1.2 million dollars was budgeted for in 2024. We spent and done a few different projects and all of which totaled about $990. We have a remaining budget of $209,000. Some things that, again, I'm just throw some stuff out there, see if it would stick on the wall, again, trying to figure out if we wanted to spend the money or save it. We could pave Central Park. Otherwise, I was thinking the other ones, there is a plan on the pavement management to repave City Hall parking lot. It's not in great shape, but again, I don't know if we want to do it or not, unsure.
Are we doing on department budgets?
We're doing fairly well. We had the one repair from police that we weren't planning on. And the other part is the, other part is the, how are we gonna pay for the streetlights?
The wiring, yeah.
This is pavement money, though. Can this be used for streetlights?
Can be used for anything if you want it.
Oh, can it? Okay, I didn't know if it was like.
So, yeah, we could do those for those, again, I didn't put it up there, I probably could have. Otherwise, pave a couple of dirt roads we have that are pretty small, are 117th and 121st. Otherwise, save the money and, or any other option, I guess.
Indianapolis.
Indianapolis, yeah, whatever. Like I said, just pave it a road or try to get, do less dirt roads in town. But again.
So we have those.
Life out of it, at least that.
We have those budget overruns. And I don't know what that would, what left at. You had indicated earlier you had some thoughts.
Well, I think that what you just said is a valid point to consider also, but having been a frequent flyer at the Central Park this summer, that dirt parking lot is a good candidate for getting some improvement. And, you know, again, it's a good problem to have, the park is well-used. On many of the nights that we were there, cars are parked, you know, past City Hall out to the road and the school parking lot is full. And I think that it would actually accommodate the number of cars that are there, but it's really inefficient when it's a dirt parking lot and there's no lines because everybody parks farther apart. And I believe that that whole center section could be two cars, not one, but everybody, you know, parks like they do in the winter and so it's.
Likes Allen.
So it's really inefficient how people end up parking in there. And I think it could accommodate the use that it has today better if it was an asphalt parking lot with lined spaces.
So, I agree. I think repaving Central Park makes sense. The question I have is next year, we're set to do South Diamond Lake Road. Do we save the money, roll it over and earmark it to do, pave the parking lot next year when we do South Diamond in hopes of then getting a better deal because they're already there doing a bunch of work? So that was my only thought on it, was maybe there's a way to do it. And then if we happen to run any crazy overruns the rest of the year and we have to use it, then we end up having to use it. But at least this way, we're kind of hopefully doubling down. But the flip side of that could be is that doing this could cost more next year and then we can't do it. So I, I mean, I think it's, there's always a risk of that decision, but that was my initial thought.
We have a ballpark idea of, well, there's two questions I have. It does seem like we ran out of room and people just park on the grass. And some of that's because there's no lines. But were we looking at expanding it at all? That part?
We haven't looked at expanding it at all.
Okay.
I think what the idea is just to shape and pave what's there and, like David said, put some lines down to make it more efficient.
What's an estimate? I didn't see an estimate in here, maybe.
Yeah, we don't have an estimate. I don't know, maybe Jason could run a number quick of some square feet, but.
Yeah, we haven't looked at it, I don't.
We've done no preliminary work at all. I just, like I said, looked at a general number. It costs us $100,000, $200,000 to do Thicket Hills and 152nd. Again, we're paving new pavement, but again, we're not putting down more gravel or anything. It's fairly.
Can't be that much money.
It can't be too much. That's why, again, I threw out a number of, I don't know.
I think Matt's idea is it could have been actually where we just bank what's left of it. And then when, when South Diamond, it just seems like we should be able to get a better price.
I would hope so if doing that much.
Well, right now, asphalt's cheap just because of what we're doing in Thicket Hills too. I mean, compared to what we thought it was gonna be. I brought this up to Marty, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. To me, it was either Central Park or Stevens Park. Stevens Park, the way I'd like to get as much done there as we can. We don't even know where the parking lot's gonna be.
Yeah. And I don't, you know, I think some of us, well, at least me, I don't like where the parking lot's gonna be. But does it make sense to bank it or do you think pavement right now is? I know that's a.
Crystal ball.
Crystal ball thing, but.
Pull it out.
And where's the dog gonna be next year?
I think that there'd be a lot of sense in paving it now. I think winter time for, you know, those people picking up kids over there is always a difficult time for them. So if I had my choice, I would pave it this year.
I think it's worth getting a bid and then looking at it.
That's, I was gonna say, Jason, we're gonna have to pay engineering to develop this and pay the engineering costs to figure out what's gonna, so I get that.
And that's gonna.
But assuming we do that this year, it would, it's not gonna change if we move it a year out. Like, if we get the number and we decide to wait till next year, it's not gonna.
Engineering and costs, no.
We would just pay it now for the, yeah, so I would say we should.
We would just update the year on the.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Then why not, why not start the process now and then we get the number and we know and we can make a decision then? I think we should also look at, I think we'll get better utilization if it's paved. But if there's a way to expand that, because even on, like, the sporting events are huge, but like track and field at the school, trying to find parking, that's a heck of a thing to do and like it's, and so I would say that's probably, if we can get more space too, would be helpful. I know it's going to greatly increase the cost. Go ahead.
The school district, if it's paved, the school district might improve their portion of it.
Didn't you ask them?
They might move.
They will not improve our.
Correct.
Portion of anything, because they don't do any improvements off of city, of school district property. What's their portion?
Their portion is any, anything up from the basketball courts down there or the pavement. They would improve that so for kid and drop off and pickup. So they would improve their portion if our portion was improved.
Like back here?
Because they, they do pickup and drop off back.
Oh, oh, you mean over to the basket, okay. Yeah, I follow. I was thinking the basketball court, the youth event. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Expanded quite a bit for it to hit that.
Yeah, because I, I feel like if we have more space back there, that'd be helpful. Not just for, I mean, for pickup would be helpful too, but when there's an event there, it's hard to get parking.
So is that good enough?
Yeah, so generally, it sounds like the general direction of the council is let's look at it, go through engineering stuff, get some, maybe some bids, figure if we can do it this year. If not, maybe we can look at next year, maybe we can add some additional parking, whatever else may be. It sounds like in general, just use some engineering.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Item I. This one better be fast. Item I, who's taking item I?
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. I have Amy Schmidt here, city attorney, who's able to discuss, and I know that she sent some stuff out in the packet related to an EDA enabling resolution, movement forward. What we're looking for tonight is just generally what does the council want to do? If we want to move forward with whatever we need to do, we need to make an ordinance amendment, do we need to have a public hearing? So there'll be future things coming up, but again, this is general discussion and how we want to move forward with the EDA from a council perspective.
So.
Amy and I will stand for questions.
I had a number of points on at least what I read through. So currently, section 2.1 has five members and it's seven members.
Mayor, if I could, that was actually one of the questions that I had that I wanted to run through with the council. Because the bylaws say seven, say five and two council members, and I just wanted to clarify from my own understanding and make those kind of corrections.
Yeah.
One of the things that, that I, that I can kind of tee up is that, you know, this is my attempt to kind of make the resolution and, and just to clarify also, one of the things that Zach just said, it wouldn't be an ordinance, it would be just a resolution. But the statute requires a public hearing, kind of the same as it is, as, as if it were an ordinance, so it's just kind of semantics, but I just want to make clear that it would just be a resolution that you would adopt. So so the, and I'll circle back to that 2.1, so it is seven members that.
It's.
Because the bylaws say five and.
So we changed the bylaws.
They say 5 to 7.
Bylaws do?
Two, seven?
Yep.
Okay, so that's the last change we made was to make that change? Okay.
So the statute says you have five or you have seven?
Yep.
It doesn't really specify a range.
Right, that's, that's why.
The current bylaws say 5 to 7.
Okay, so they need to be, that's.
So that would be a. That would be a change I would make to the bylaws.
Yeah, so the bylaw, I'm assuming we would update the bylaws to.
Yeah, with the resolution, whatever, what you'd pass the resolution, we would amend the bylaws to match.
Yeah, so.
Sorry, that's part of the cleanup process.
So we can stick to the resolution and the bylaws just have to follow.
Correct.
Right, right. So, okay, so that was one of the questions that I had and what was, what, take me to your next question.
2.2A, that, that you had the bracket on, where did that 12-year thing come from?
That was, that's something that is kind of common in other cities ordinances and I bracketed it because that's just something that I threw in there and if you wanted to consider that, you could include it, you don't have to if you don't want to. But that's just something that's kind of common in other cities.
It just seems to me that if we have the 12 years on somebody and we don't want them in anymore, we just wouldn't vote them in. And I don't think anybody's anywhere near the 12 right now, but it just, it's new and it struck me as an odd. An odd paragraph in there. I, I just didn't strike it. It's up to you guys, I guess, I don't know. Does anybody else care about the 12-year thing?
Can we step back? Is it, do we want five or do we want seven?
Well, I'd say seven. I'm good with seven.
I'd root them to have seven.
Yeah, I'd be in the last three years, so.
I'm, I wasn't here when it was moved from five to seven. It happened right before I kind of joined. My question is this, is when we moved from five to seven, we went, and this may drive a larger conversation of the EDA has a large amount of authority. When there were five people, two of which were city council members, 40% of the voting base on the EDA was elected officials.
Yep.
By adding two more, we diluted that down to two sevens, meaning that the public's.
We knew that.
Vote, okay, that was taken into account when we did that. We, we went from 40% down to whatever two sevens is, so 26%. So we, we almost half the amount of, of really voted public pieces that go into that, which brings me to a larger question of, if we're looking at doing this, I think we should probably talk about the EDA as a whole. I have no problem with the EDA. We often compare ourselves to cities like Champlin and others. They have an EDA, but it's the city council. There's other cities that have an economic development commission, which to me seems honestly more fitting. All the other pieces we have are commissions where they make advisory statements to the council, but the council is actually the EDA. They're the ones that make the final decision, so we listen to the weight of the planning commission and the parks commission. And then we make the decision versus giving a lot of authority to the EDA, people who aren't voted in, they're appointed.
So this, this was my concern here, is that we're, the underlying reason for some of this stuff is to make changes. And for, to me, you know, there was a reason this city went with an external body for that. And, and, and I'm fine with, with the external body. I just, to me, my goal would be to clean up what we need to clean up and if we could have changed it to just be council members years ago, but we didn't.
Well, I think it's worth discussing, I guess, is what, what it comes down to. Maybe, maybe you disagree. I wasn't here when any of that was decided upon. I've talked to Zach about the timeline, how we got here and how some of the powers got adjusted to where they are, seemed very fitting to other things that were happening at the time in the city, which is interesting to me. But I, I look at just my last year and a half here and there have been times where the EDA was given power to make decisions that could have put us in some pretty big lawsuits. If, if things didn't go the way they did go, thankfully they did. But I just, I don't know, I think if you talk to the average person, they don't realize that the EDA has the power that they have and that they're not elected officials, they're appointed.
We knew all this. I mean, this is, this is why that there are cities that have external bodies.
I know, but we often compare ourselves to our neighboring and, and we aren't, I mean.
So.
We're outside that norm.
Are we here to clean this up or to redesign it?
I mean, if we're going to clean it up, we might as well do it the way we want at the end. Why clean it up and then change it again? That seems like, be like paving a road and repaving it again next year. That doesn't seem like the right thing to do. If we're going to do it, I think we should talk about what do we want and see the EDA as a function. I mean, we have an EDA that refuses to help home businesses. They don't talk about home businesses, don't do anything about it, but one of the EDA members is an at-home business, like there's some, some things there we also need to kind of hammer out of like they've, they brought it upon themselves to give themselves the authority to not help all businesses in the city.
If you're talking about the way they behave, we can certainly, you know, look at that. And if we want them to focus on, on one thing versus the other, but I mean, it's, to me, it's, it's similar to the parks. For, for years, we just had the parks determine the code of the swing set. And at some point, I and others decided they needed more, more autonomy. I don't want to tell the planning commission, here's my rules and here's what you need to do. I rely on their expertise to, to give me an answer. So if we want to drive the way they make decisions, then yeah, we might as well do it. But I, I'm not there.
I would like to see them more as in an advisory role like the rest of our commissions are. And then we make the final decision as the elected officials in the city, but I do think there are other things, like I said. We have home businesses that, in my opinion, they'd want to work with because eventually, hopefully, those home businesses grow enough to the point that they're going to want commercial space and then they're going to be partnering with them to help them with that. So there are some things that, you know, I, I, I watch all the meetings, I don't attend them, but I watch every single one that I've heard and I think there are opportunities that if, if they're going to self-regulate away from what we as a council, where the voted officials in the city think should be happening. I'd love it if they just did it on their own and we didn't have to, to like babysit that, but if they're not going to do it, then maybe we have to. So I think the, the first piece is, is I would rather see them as an advisory commission and move the EDA authority back to the city council as the final decision, just like we do the rest of our advisory bodies that we have. I think that they offer great value, they have a great expertise, but to me, that's the real fit that I think the, that we should be having this play out as and again, other cities do this, that are much larger than us have it set up this way. Woodbury does this, for example, and.
There are a few cities, most cities, it's the council.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I said my piece, you've said your piece, we haven't heard from the other three, I guess.
So I'm not sure I'm there on, on blowing it up and starting it over with it being the, with the council. I think that may have been a lot simpler at, at some point, but I'm not sure that. Well, one of the things I think we, we get or, or potentially have with a separate body is getting that business expertise onto that, onto the authority. You know, they, they look at the five of us, Scott's an independent businessman, I think he's the only one sitting here. I don't have that expertise. I worked for a business, but I, I didn't own one, I didn't have the, those operational considerations that, that the folks that are on the EDA, the community members or should be. And, you know, and I think the, the composition of the current membership is something that we could talk about, but I think that's a separate issue from how it's, you know, how it's structured. I have some concerns too about, you know, committees or commissions or authorities that, you know, can in any way be compared to the Met Council, who we all love, right? Because they're, they're appointed and they have a lot of power. And, and whenever the Met Council comes up in this room, you know, I don't know what gets muttered under the mic, but, you know, it's, it's usually not, not great. And so I fear that, you know, having a separate body that, that can make cities that impact all, or decisions that impact all of us with no accountability to the voters. That said, what has been confusing through my year and a half, I guess, on the EDA has been, you know, kind of the history and what is the authority and what isn't, and we found the further we dug into that stranger it got, I guess, in how we got to where we are. And what I read in this, in this draft document is, it's section eight of the, the state statute is the limit of, the limit of power. And I think it's five or six in this document, but in, in many of the places where funds would be expended, the final authority is the council. We, we still make that final determination. And that makes me comfortable with, with having it being a separate body. But it would, for that to be true, then we would need to include some of those things that are under the limitation of powers.
I don't know, I, I hear what Matt's saying and I, I agree with David Fischad. I perused the state statute just kind of under the limitations of powers and it does seem like it gives the, the, that authority to the council at, at the end of the day. But I just, I guess just from my optics, it's just, I haven't seen a whole lot of movement from that group as far as just like economic, economic redevelopment of, of whatever. I just, it just, you know, we've got flower planners and and a few other odds and ends, but no significant projects. I know they pursued the land, but I didn't know what, what, what was behind all that, so. I, I, I know literally nothing about what an EDA, or what this EDA function is. I guess I'd just like to know more, but so when I go into this draft, I just, I see that we have the ultimate say, they can suggest stuff to us. But I guess as far as like the functions of what the EDA is, that's a deeper discussion I think is worth having. But I don't see anything wrong with this draft. I mean, again, it's a lot of state statute language, like, you can get lost pretty easily, so that's, that's just my two cents.
Scott?
Oh, as David would say, this, I, I didn't count how many times it says, but Dayton City Council has they're ref, they're referenced over and over that the city council is going to have the final say on, on, on any financial matters. Part of the problem that I see is there's been a roadblock for EDA ever since it's been there.
Yep.
And with a stop sign in front of you, you just can't go. So it, it's either, and I am, personally, I'm, I'm, I think that the past behavior needs to be cleaned up and I think that's getting much better. I think that part is kind of taken care of. And that can be directed too. I'm, I'm all, all about cleaning it up and giving them a shot and letting them do what they're supposed to do and, and taking the roadblocks out of the way. And just see where it goes.
Just for my curiosity, what do you feel is a roadblock that's been in their way for the last 15 years?
Well, this, this triangle piece has been bounced around for a couple of years now and it's.
Is that what the?
It's still sitting there. The, the Lucero thing took, or the, I should say, the Levy Street thing. That took two years, mostly because previous staff didn't want an EDA to have it. I mean, that roadblock, there was a stop sign there constantly. Now the staff doesn't have that roadblock there. It, it's far less than what it ever was. I, I think there, I think the commission should be given a chance and, and, and see what happens.
How long's a chance, yeah?
How long of a chance? Oh.
Do we decide?
I think it can be brought up again. I mean, I don't see the reason to, if, if we, if we go through this thing and then hopefully all this legal stuff is cleaned up and we can operate under this deal.
They still have about six bullets.
It's, it's a big.
And get going. I mean, I don't see any reason to change it for till 26, 27. 28 is the big thing nowadays, 2028. The city's going to change drastically in 28, let's wait till then.
A big part of the problem has been that, that what the EDA's authority has been and what they should be doing has been really unclear. And you look at one document, it says one thing, and you look in another place, it says something else. And I, that's certainly caused confusion for me in, in my time representing us on that commission. Is what, you know, what are we allowed to do? And I think that that's, if we do our work here, we make that, that clear for, so everybody knows what the rules are and who's doing what. That has not been the case up until now, it still isn't until we finalize this, but I think that would help and I think that there has to be some time then for, for these things to be implemented and understood so that the EDA can actually move ahead on, on some projects. You know, we're all standing here waiting for that to happen and, and nobody hopes so more than me, but I think that this has got, this part of it has got to, got to get cleaned up so everybody knows who's doing what. And there's, there's more to talk about than where, what we've gotten to so far. There's things I don't understand either, which is usually the case, but I'll ask those questions when we get to them.
All right.
If I, if I could ask one more question about the composition of the members.
Yeah.
So the statute says if you have seven members, then it's five members and two council members, so. So it'd just be a number, a matter of me changing the numbers here, but one of the things that I, I guess I can't really say I added it because it wasn't really, it wasn't really in here, but I just want to make sure of, you know, the way that this is structured right now in 2.1A, changing the three to five, it would be three commissioners, five commissioners shall be members of the Dayton business community or residents of the city of Dayton with business and or economic development experience. That "or" is not specifically called out anywhere that you do now. I just wanted to double check if that's something that you wanted to keep in there.
I mean, if we're going to keep the EDA the way it is, I think it makes sense to have it so that it's either business owners, C-suite individuals that live in our city, because I've always said this before, I think if the, I always pick on Best Bikes, I'm pretty sure he doesn't live here, if the CEO of Best Buy lives here, we probably want his input to what draws businesses places, especially retail locations, because they have that experience. Or just business owners, if you own a business, but your business isn't in Dayton, I would think you'd want that expertise on the EDA as well, so you can understand, well, why did you choose to put your business in Rogers versus Dayton and what would it, you know, what could we change to make it more attractive to be here? So I think, you know.
So the "or" is, you're fine with the "or"?
I'm fine with them either being.
Yeah, because that opens up, we can always not appoint somebody.
Yeah, I would say preferred in my view, because, you know, you think about some of the larger businesses with, that we have in town, which is, you know, I guess not a big number, but recent past, King Solutions, you know, was a, you know, is an important business in this community. And we didn't have the CEO on, on the EDA. Now, maybe that would have been better, but, you know, what's our odds of getting that person? But we did have a very competent person in, in that role. And so I think we need that "or" there to allow what we've already done.
Yeah.
Okay, and then just another clarification. So the, the terms are six years per the statute and that's just something that I, that I'm, that I call out, you know, specify that that's, that that's the term that they're appointed to.
And I would, yeah, just continue with, what I, we, we, we went through this about three years ago because somehow, I don't know how, but the terms got messed up.
I think we lost track or something.
Yeah, somehow, and so at that point, we just set the terms of the, the current members and so it seems like we could just continue on with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're, you would take an action separately to officially, and that's actually part of the, the resolution. You can either do it in this one to reappoint the current members to finish out the terms that they've previously been appointed to. We can address that.
Okay, sure.
Another, another, in either a separate action or in this one too.
All right. And so I, so I don't know, what does everybody feel about the 12-year thing? I, I don't.
It might take a long time to be in any commission to begin with.
It might be, but I mean, to me, if somebody gets to the 12-year and we don't want them in, we just don't vote them in. True. I'm not understanding what that, what the upside to that limit is. Other than.
Other than limiting the term, that's, that's.
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean.
I don't mind the term limit. I don't think it hurts anything and I think if anything, it helps me sure we're constantly getting fresh views on that.
Well, then we can just not vote. See, that's what I'm not getting. If you don't want somebody on there, we can just vote, not vote for them. That's what I'm confused about.
Yeah, you just don't reappoint, right?
You just don't reappoint.
Well, I, I mean, that anticipates that they're. Well, I, I mean, that anticipates that there would be, you know, unanimity or majority on the council on a given person at the 12-year mark. This just gives, you know, everybody on the same.
Sure.
Even footing of, you get two terms, no more than 12 years. But it's also not required. You can, it's just, it's something that you can just choose whether you want to include it or not.
I guess I'd, I guess I'd prefer to strike it too. Now, back, back to the point of if you had Best Buy's CEO, I mean, I'd, I'd leave him on there as long as you.
Well, probably, yeah. I'm trying to think, in the same, you know, wheelhouse, I think you are, is like, you know, what other industries would stick out 12-plus years, you know, that would grow in Dayton.
Trust me, we'll take the CEO of any company before we take the CEO of.
That's why, yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with striking it, because, you know, maybe there is something that takes a 20-year project, and maybe somebody does head that one up. I don't know.
Well, we do, as Dennis has said, we, we do have that ability not to reappoint.
Right.
You know, I, and we don't have term limits on any of our other commissions.
Yeah.
We have a hard enough time.
We have a hard enough.
Six years is a long term.
Which is fun. I'll give you all an update that you will have an email coming your way.
Oh, cool.
Where you'll have an option.
Oh, really?
So and then my next question would be in the next paragraph B related to the, a city council member not being able to, you know, when they leave office, not the last sentence there, upon leaving office for any reason, whether unelected, resigned, whatever, that a former city council member wouldn't be appoint, wouldn't be able to serve as an EDA commissioner for two years.
I'm sure staff called you, because I'm coming up pretty soon here.
For the record, no, they did not.
No. That might make sense for like a.
When you leave, you're gone.
Like a planning commission, I can maybe see that. But I, I don't know the, because there's some sort of maybe a backwards conflict of interest? Is that what this is dealing with?
No, it's just, it's just a, it's just a, it's something that is commonly in one, in an ordinance or in a resident, a resolution like this one, I just put it in here as an option for you all to consider.
I didn't.
I think the intent of the two city council spots is that there is, is in my mind, that there is elected voice on it. So you'd always want to keep two of them there.
Oh, that makes sense, but you can't now.
In my case, in a council member spot, if he's, if you're, if you're not on council, then you're not on EDA.
Correct.
So it really doesn't need to be there.
Unless you get appointed. That's what this deals with.
This would deal with you, Scott, were to be done with council, and then you got appointed to the EDA. You wouldn't be able to do that for two years.
You couldn't be appointed.
You couldn't get appointed for two years.
And, and again, it goes back to, if, if the council at that time doesn't want to appoint him, they just won't appoint him. So that, that's why I'm not sure.
I mean, it's just in there for an option for you all to consider, if it's not, if it's not something you want to do.
Sounds like strike it.
I think strike it.
Plus, my guess is, when it ever happens, we won't remember that it's in there.
Well, you'll be here. You'll let them know.
All right.
Just a question, because I missed it. Was it a four-year term or a six-year term?
Six years.
So one question that I do have in section 2.5 about compensation and reimbursement. One of the, the voiced votes that a past council took to make some of the changes that we're trying to clean up here, set the compensation at $25 per meeting, I think. I don't know that for a fact. One option to consider, and this is why I phrased it the way the last sentence is there about the rate of compensation or reimbursement is established by a written resolution, you know, so it'd be separate from this enabling resolution, you know, just like you adopt your fee schedule each year, you would adopt whatever it is. Kind of, you know, my, I don't say it specifically here, but, you know, the thought being that, you know, you would do that in kind of the same manner that you raise your salaries here on the council, that, you know, you vote on it, but it doesn't take effect until after the next election, kind of, kind of timing wise. So it's not like the two council members who serve on the EDA are going to jack up their, their price to go.
Maybe the next January or something. That's a long way to look for change, I guess, six years.
Yeah. I mean, so it's, no, it would be until after the next election, not.
Oh.
So it's like if you were to make a change in October to, you know, whatever the, the per meeting payment would be.
Yeah.
It wouldn't take effect until after the November election, you know, something like that.
I don't know that we, do we do that with the other commissions? I don't think we do.
Well, I think this is getting confused, because that $25 only applies to the council members.
No, it applies to all commissions. So it's written specifically in the ordinance for each commission, it specifically lays out how much they get paid per meeting. In each, each ordinance, it says, it's a, I don't even remember, number or letter H or something, says the rate will be $25 per meeting.
I, I understand why, you know, if the council's voting themselves a raise, it doesn't kick in until the next election. That makes sense. But the commissions, I'm not sure I see the tie.
I think it's because we serve on the commissions, and so we could then serve, we could put a raise in for ourselves if we were on said commission. I think that's what, what Amy's getting after. I don't know if we need it. Well, correct. In this case, the EDA, but we, we also, it'd be the same thing with parks, right? Like, oh, we should pay parks $1,000 a meeting, because I have a meeting on parks, you know, and then if it happens before I get elected, that would be a piece.
And there's no, there's no record, there's no requirement that, that the, a, a rate change take effect that way? That's just a parallel that you could choose to, to use.
I'd just kick it in at the next year.
You know, it could be effective January 1.
Yeah. I thi, I think we can determine that as, as needed. It's not like it's changed for, you know, it changes every year.
It hasn't changed for a long time, yeah.
So I guess I haven't been paying attention to pay stubs, but we, we get paid for liaisons?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
For the meetings that you attend. So if you miss one, you obviously don't get that.
I mean, it's probably not a lot, I mean, $25 for six months is $150, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't have.
You're really making it.
Yeah, I get it.
That's why we're doing it.
I know.
It's not a bigger vote.
It's not a bigger vote.
That's why Scott fights to be on every commission.
Yeah.
So, I mean, just so structurally, having the rate of compensation established by a separate resolution is an acceptable, an acceptable way to go? Or do you want to set it in this resolution?
I think it should be separate.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay. All right. And I'm just going to run down, and if you want to, you know, run down my, my points, and if you want to jump in wherever you want to, just tell me where it's at.
As long as you're done before 10:30.
So what, okay, so I'll go to number 3.2. For some reason, currently, the bylaws say that the, there is no official seal for the EDA, but the statute says that the EDA shall have a separate seal. So here, one way to handle that is just to say that the official seal of the EDA is the seal of Dayton. And, you know, and that's where, you know, when you have a resolution and you emboss it and all that kind of business, you know. So it's not a huge deal, but it's just kind of, I put that in there to, you know, conform to the statute requirements.
Does that work for staff?
Yeah, sounds great.
Perfect.
Um, let's see.
Less money on embossers, there.
And designing one and all that everything. So one question, I'll jump to section 5.1, under the statutory powers.
Do you notice a between there?
I, I do, but maybe you want me to come back?
Whatever you want to do.
I don't want to.
Let's go in order if we can.
All right, 3.6.
3.6.
The last sentence says the bond must be for twice the amount of money likely to be on hand at any time. But it's limited to 300,000. Well, we already know that, so maybe this is, is this verbiage? Because the money on hand that the EDA has is 600 right now, right?
670.
Yeah, 670.
Twice that's a lot more than 300. That's why I was, it seems inconsistent.
That's straight out of the statute.
Well, once again, okay.
We have a question. What is a treasurer's bond? If we have one, I've never, I've never heard of it personally.
That was just an.
So I'm assuming your treasurer doesn't have one posted at the moment?
Uh, that'd be no.
So do we just strike all 3.6 and not have treasurer bond?
Well.
If it's in the statute, you don't have to have it in the resolution, because it is, and it is a requirement of the statute regardless of whether it's in your resolution or not. But, I mean, that is, it's exactly straight out of the statute 469.096 subdivision 6.
Maybe we have to have it, but I still don't understand what it's for.
Yeah.
So that they don't embezzle the money.
It's a, it's kind of like an insurance bond, right?
So somebody runs off with all the money, we have money somewhere else.
It's listed as an insured bond.
Well, the simple, the simple way to solve that is any funds that are distributed.
Well, they still have two signers.
Yeah.
But that's not, that's not, it does, it kind of doesn't matter. The statute is what statute says. That's that. Amy fix it.
Do you have the treasurer?
No.
I don't know if you want to. Who's the treasurer then? Person's noted on the EDA, correct? Like, the EDA isn't EDA, is the treasurer?
They, they have one.
And.
I just.
They don't handle any money, so.
Yeah, see, but again.
That's why I'm confused.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know.
What's the solution? The solution is either get rid of it or fix it, the terminology.
If you can't get rid of it, because it's, in the statute, you got to change.
The obligation doesn't go away. It doesn't necessarily have to be included in your resolution, but the obligation to comply with the statute doesn't change one way or the other.
Okay, well.
I think it might as well be in there so we know about it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
However, yeah.
Mayor, you have somebody online who has their hand up? Would you like to have them talk?
Or do you want to wait till after?
It's kind of a double edged sword if they have something specific to this.
Should we get through our points first and then do it maybe?
Yeah, maybe we should do that. Is it a member of the EDA?
I don't know.
Couldn't do it.
The hand is now down.
Hand's down, though.
However, if someone through the Zoom link is wanting to speak on a topic, you are required to state your name and address for the record. If you wanted to speak on this item, you can re-raise your hand.
Okay, so let's get through. So anyways, that sentence is inconsistent, but if it's in state statute, we're stuck with it. Imagine that, state statute. Okay. 3.9, it says the secretary has to, do, 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 do. Present the finance, basically a financial statement, but it doesn't say often. I'm guessing it's in coordination with the audit.
Again, this is just straight out of the state statute.
Okay. I, I, it seems like we can assume that. It doesn't even give a term. It doesn't even say once a year or once a quarter.
And then are the positions actually designated EDA members?
Yes, they are, yeah.
Yeah, they voted, yeah. So, all right, so that's going to have state statute.
We don't, we don't do that one either.
Okay, so now I'm up to 5.5. And where were you at?
5.1.
Okay. Oh, yeah, did you?
I was, I was at 5.1. If anybody else has something in between.
No, I'm.
Okay.
I'm up to 5.5.
Yeah, 5.5, I have a question. 5.1, go ahead.
Okay, I want to stop at 5.1 if we could. So this is, I think is, what I understand that the council has done in the past is that, you know, all the powers of, of an EDA and the powers and duties of a housing redevelopment authority, there's also one other section in the EDA statute that allows the EDA to exercise additional powers as a, basically as a city within certain, within certain parameters. So I just, I didn't know if you wanted to have all of those included, or if it was just the EDA and the HRA powers.
What were the other powers?
There are other powers. Let me find my statute, sorry.
That wasn't the district.
That an EDA can exercise under, I have too many papers here, sorry.
Do they have to form like a district of some sort?
It would be something like that, yeah. It would be a.
An HRA or EDA district?
Well, the EDA, that's, that's something we should talk about is the EDA districts, but, here, I'm sorry, roll over. So this, they, they can exercise the powers of city development districts starting at the, as it's outlined in chapter 469 point subdivision 469.124. And so I, I don't think that this is something that, that the, that the city has done in the past, but I just, it is a statutory power that you can grant to this, to the EDA. I just wanted to make sure whether you did or didn't want to do that.
If we haven't, I'd say no.
No.
I agree. And if they, at some point it makes sense, then maybe we can add.
Let's have that discussion then.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's, and there's sort of a, and then there's another question that I have in the EDA powers. Actually, we already answered that question, sorry. So the question about this, the, the city development districts was also applicable in section 6.1J later in this document. So we'll just skip that one. So that would take us to 5.5 if there's something there.
I just had a clarification here. 5.5 says the Dayton EDA may, and then it says, present to the council for approval. Well, how is, how, how is it a may if we have to approve it?
It just means that if they do choose to do it, then it would have to have council approval before they could move forward.
Why don't we make it just a will? I mean, I, I still struggle with the fact that, like, commit, whether, not just the EDA, this is all the commissions, getting them in once a year just to tell us what your plans are this year, what you're going to do last year, even though we asked for it. I know Zach asked all of the chairs for all of the commissions, multiple times we emailed the comment, and none of them responded, so.
Don't we have a planning commission coming?
Not this year. Not this year. But we asked this year already. So like, it should be part of their bylaws that they're here in front of us once a year presenting, for all of them, not just, I'm not just picking, all of them should be doing that much. I would say twice a year, because they should be coming at the beginning of the year and saying, here's what we did last year that was successful, and here's what we're planning to do in this year. And then six months in right before budget season, they should say, here's what we need a budget for next year, here's what we did this year already, here's what our plans are for the rest of this year. So I would change that to, they will show up biannually, so twice a year. That'd be my, semi, sorry, semiannually. Yeah, biannually, every other year. That always throws me, I'm sorry. Semiannually, yes. That, I would say, that should be in all of the commissions in the EDA, in my.
In all their bylaws.
Yes.
So what do we want to do with this one?
So you want this to say that the Dayton EDA shall annually develop a plan and present it before, and come before the council for, to present it twice per year?
I'd be happy with the ones for now.
I had at least one.
I think there's a strategic, should be annual, should be annual, but then there should be another element of adding an update midway, something like that.
To your point, I think we should see them more often. You know, this 5.5 seems to deal with a strategic plan that I think is done annually, so, so presenting it annually I think should be a requirement. But I think there's other places in here related to the budget and stuff where that second visit, if you will, could come into play. But for, as far as a strategic plan, it seems like.
It'd be a tactical plan.
Yeah, sure.
Well, that would be the beginning of the year one, right? Usually last year's we're planning to this year, and then the second one they come in later, not under the section is.
Or, you know, or now, while the budgets are being developed, what's the plan?
Sure, either or, yeah.
So then at least a shall, change the made or a shall. Did you have something else for 5.5?
No, that's, that was it.
Okay.
Question, would the council also do the same thing?
Council do what?
Of having like an annual plan that they would present to the commissions and then ask, how can the commissions help the council?
Well, that's what happens when you have those annual meetings then, right? That's the collaborating point, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean.
We have a strategic plan that we typically do every year.
Yeah.
We didn't do one this year because we adopted one last year that involved both the last year and this year.
Too many darts.
Let's do darts next year.
Darts?
Oh, really? You want darts?
Painful.
The answer is we already do it. We just didn't do it this year, but we did it last year. That just, that just didn't happen to be presented to commissions. It was just.
I think in August, it's, you already kinda know. Where you're going, but. So I have one at six one H, but you, you had one at six one J, I think?
Six one J, we resolved because of, because of the conversation earlier.
So six one H.
That one you can transfer money out.
Yeah, that struck me as very odd. And seemed like there would be statutory problems with that since they're a different levy authority.
That's straight out of the statute.
Shocking. Okay. I mean, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with it.
Dramatically nightmarish.
What's weird is it also says to pay for bonds, except everybody knows all that money is fungible. Right? I mean. We just pull it out of this pot and move it to this pot. It just struck me as odd that the levy, a separate levy body. We can move money from.
Ultimately, they're not a separate levying body. They request that, that the city council adopt the levy.
Yeah, let me rephrase that. A separate levy authority.
Line item.
Could be.
Right. They, but they, they can only requ, an EDA, the EDA can only request that the council adopt.
But even if, yeah.
I see what you're saying though.
Either way, it's two levies. It strikes me as odd that we can pull money from one and put it in another one. But you're saying that's straight out of the.
Straight out of the statute.
Sweet. All right. Six, six point nine J, are you?
For clarification, what we've done in the past is not funded before. Like we've, they've had. When we levied, we, we said, hey, you don't need one, three hundred thousand or whatever they, they can typically levy.
Yeah, there's a limit.
But we've never pulled money from.
No.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, we've never transferred money out, but we just did not levy.
Levy forward, yeah.
So six nine J, what would be an example of a development district in Dayton today? I don't know the way you have it.
The EDA should, to exercise powers, some of the powers, they need to establish it. They would, you know. The EDA would take an action or they would, you know, draw lines and describe the boundaries of.
Be like a TIF district of sorts.
Along those lines, yeah.
Okay.
And it'd be a similar way. And then it's within those boundaries that they, that they would exercise certain powers.
So this, so this is, since this is a new thing. You're saying that the council would have to approve that district. Let me look and try to find where I was at here. Wait a minute, there's one six nine J.
That's, I was looking for it. Six nine J, I was like, I don't know.
Six one I says that.
The specific powers contained in that statute.
Yeah, six one J. One nine, whatever.
Yeah, expresses approval of the Dayton City Council by written resolution.
That, those sections, that's four sixty nine point one two four to point one three four, that's, that's city. This, this acting is a city district. That's the one, that's gonna come out.
Where they draw them, okay.
Yeah.
But the EDA would have districts of its own to act in.
Okay. Yeah. I could flip a coin on that one too.
I don't know. Obviously, we haven't done anything like this.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think of a scenario where we would.
Well, and they might for some reason, but it seems like they could just come convince us, so. I don't know. And so you would put J in.
I would take J out based on what, what you, you told me. Earlier in, related to.
But this would.
Section five point one.
This would explicitly not allow that power to them.
Correct.
So you could leave it in there even though it's not part of their authority in case it ever changes.
Yeah, this, this section lists the limits on their power.
Yeah.
So.
So I guess I misunderstood what you were getting at. You were, I thought you were saying the EDA could take that power. And this preempts that.
They would only take that power if you give it to them.
We have to approve it.
Oh, they would have to identify.
So this is redundant?
Well, it is.
Okay.
So I mean, it could go either way, you know, if it's not listed in one of their enumerated powers, then they can't exercise it, so. You can either specifically say they can't do that in this limitation section. Or you can just let the, the fact that it's not listed as an affirmative grant of power.
It seems like, yeah, it's redundant to me. I just shouldn't rip it out then.
Yeah.
If it just says what, is there any fact? I'm okay with.
So, and, and kind of back at six point one D. About developing annual goals and plans for development and redevelopment in the city, that's different than the strategic plan that may. Go, council retreats to what you're looking, kinda hoping for. That way they can, and you could add the obligation for them to come in and, and present, you know, here as well. So it's just really kinda depends on how you wanna do that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think this should.
All right, and it says must on this one.
Yeah, so there's a difference between the annual goals and plans and a strategic plan, which theoretically would be in more long range.
Yep.
Yeah, so to me, this long range user plan would be the January thing, and this would be the middle of the year thing.
That makes sense.
If, if I read them the way I think I read them, yeah.
Yeah. Any substantial additions or variations from that plan.
Okay. The only other question I had was for eight, section eight, which is just a kind of a.
That's the cleanup.
Right. So here's my question. It says. Determines that the actions taken by the EDA since twenty fourteen have complied with the limitations imposed. By the council, blah, blah, blah. Here's my question. How would we comply with this and how would we know it to be true? Is this just some sort of a? What is this?
This is the ratification of everything that, that has happened. Since twenty fourteen, when the changes were made only by, by voice vote and not by written resolution. The authority in four sixty nine point oh nine two is, is given to the council to specifically affirmatively say. Yep, everything they've done complies with what power we have given them in the past.
Okay.
This is, this is, this is the, the key to clean up.
Pretty safe.
You know, to, to, the, the levy that they've asked you to levy, the, you know, the, any expenditure of funds. Any of the actions that they've taken, this is your way of saying, yeah, they did what we empowered them to do.
So this is just covering that.
This is an exclusionary clause, isn't it?
This is, this is the repair. This is the ratification.
Yeah.
Of what has happened in this kind of limbo created by not having a written resolution.
Yeah. Basically giving them the authority to everything they did since twenty fourteen because they technically didn't have the authority because it wasn't a written action.
What's the worst thing that could happen?
Taxpayer lawsuits for no legal levy?
But all the levies we did. You know, we worked, we went through the levies.
Right, yeah, I mean, and so, I mean, it's, it's. At what, you know, improper expenditures, I mean. Yeah, I mean, there's any number of things that.
What, what, what are we doing here? So, okay, it doesn't seem like there's.
So I think.
There's a whole lot of risk, but it's just, it's, it's better.
It's just a clean.
It's, it's, it's clean. It, it starts the, wipes the slate as, so to speak, and. You know, allows you to move forward.
Okay.
And remove stop signs.
Remove some stop signs.
I don't know, we'll see. Okay, I, I'm done. I don't have any more questions. Anybody else have any question?
Nope. No, I don't have any more. And I do see the logic for having that sort of blanket over the pad.
Just the same. Be done with it.
You know, because.
It's a move on.
The voice vote of the, of the council, you know, expressed the intention of what the council wanted to allow the EDA to do. It's just that technicality of not doing it by written resolution. And so this just puts in the written resolution that they were, that. That the powers that they have exercised to date has been at the direction of the, of the council and. The intention of what the council. Wanted to grant them the power to, to, to do.
Okay, do we want a motion on this or is it gonna get cleaned up first?
Yeah, we gotta, we have to get it cleaned up first. We have to have a, we have to have a public hearing. You will likely see this on August twelfth. Based on timings and whatever else.
Okay. All right. So are we good? On to item J. Public Purpose Expenditure Policy.
Mayor, members of the council, again, Amy Schmidt drafted a public purpose expenditure policy update for the city. Here to answer any questions along with Amy for that. The last time it was updated, like I noted in the staff board, is two thousand and seven. Since it's been seventeen years, we probably should at least revisit it and make sure we're all on the same page. We'll stay up for any questions.
It's as squishy as I remember it from before, so.
Yeah, so the blanket one was sent out in two thousand and seven-ish and that was what it, was it out to the city, basically the blanket one from LMC. And hasn't been touched since.
I have nothing. Anybody else?
Candidly, I had a bunch of questions. I just called Amy earlier and asked them all, so I'm good now, but.
I'm struggling a little bit. I mean, I, I think we wanna update the policy. I don't have any concern about that. Some of them, I, I just confuse me on how we would follow. And I'm reading under the policies section. City council, city administrator, and city staff who have authority to approve expenditures should consider factors like the following. The time of day of proposed event or activity is scheduled to be held. And then the other one that I'm scratching my head on is where, whether the proposed event or activity is intended to include non-city residents, officials, or employees. What's our, what's our standard for this? Do we? Do we not approve things that are after seven o'clock at night or do you, I mean, there's no guidance on how we would use this criteria. To what's, what's a good answer and what's a bad answer? You know, do we, do we not want city residents or officials or employees? And so that's where I get lost on it, is how would we? How would that be implemented? How would we use this policy to say we're, we're denying. Your request because of the time of day? Do we then have to establish what time of day we want? To approve these kind of events and that's, that's where I'm confused.
Well, I think even harder than that, like if someone, we want to put a fireworks show on at noon, that wouldn't be very good, right? You wouldn't wanna do that because it'd be the middle of the day, right? You wouldn't really get the full benefit of it. But at the same time, you probably don't wanna have a. Child's, you know, tot event where we have, a little bit like what we had at the park while, while, you won't have that at midnight, right? So like, it may even depend by event. I'm not saying we should put that in there, but. I think when I read it, part of the reason I, it was, I was okay with that is because I think it's, it's event dependent almost at that point. But maybe I'm wrong.
I think it is. I think it is. I just don't know if this criteria helps, helps you get to an answer.
This basically says everything is subjective. That's really what it is. And I feel like if the state statute on this, it's, it's almost as squishy.
Mayor, members of the council, if I could, you know, the, these are just examples of factors that you could look at. You know, if you're trying to determine whether there's a governmental purpose to it, whether it, and you. It just, if it's. You know, if it's a government meeting at seven o'clock or six thirty on a Tuesday night, then. It, the time of day doesn't really come into play, but if it's a public purpose expenditure for, like, you know. A staff event, if it's not something open to the public and, but it's not during regular work hours. You know, is that a social thing or is that a, or is that a, is that a legitimate work function that serves the government purpose? That's the kind of thing that, that, it is subjective within your discretion. But that's, that's, I think that's kind of what this, you know, is intended to, to. Way into the, into the thought process. It's not a. You, you don't have to tick every box to, to, you know, to, of this specific list. And there could be other factors that aren't here. That could weigh into your thought process on whether it fits, you know, what, what the, you know, expenditure would be. In, in, you know, to meet those three, the three criteria that are, you know. That are out of the, the case law that's been in place in Minnesota for a long time. You know, are the, the three criteria at the top of the page. You know, does it benefit the community as a whole? Does it serve directly a government function? And, you know, does it? You know, make a profit for someone else besides the city as its primary purpose? You know, those are the three things that you really have to look at, and these are just kind of. You know, different factors that could come into your, your thought process. Or if it's, you know, if it's, if it's Zach making a decision about, you know, training for staff or something like that, you know, where it's. You know, does it really fit the, the, the role and function of, of an employee? You know, who, like, you know, does Amy need to go to training for, you know, to replace the copper wire in the, in the lights? I mean, I know Amy does everything. She's great at everything, but, you know, you see what I mean? So you just kinda, you, you're looking for that reasonable fit. And these are just things that you can. Include in, in, in your analysis.
The one that should really light you up is the public purpose should be broadly construed. To comport with the changing conditions of modern life. Whatever that means. I, I, I don't know. Like I said.
That's just the way that a court would look at it, honestly. That, you know, if, if, if the city were to be sued over, you know, an improper expenditure. And, you know, an allegation of an improper expenditure. That's the way the court would look at, at the decision. You know, they would, they would. Basically defer to. The council's discretion and judgment in, in reaching the decision on how to spend that public money. And, and really, you know, it's, it's not just where, where the city actively pays a thousand dollars to somebody for something. It's, 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 there are different ways to actually expend public funds, you know, it's, it's the waiver of fees. Where you would be, you know, foregoing income that would come to the city to cover costs of staff time, but it's also. You know, a lot, having, providing, you know. Police service kinda above and beyond the norm of just, you know, police being able to respond to calls. Where you, or public works time for heritage days or something like that, where you're kinda giving an in-kind donation and not making. Not requiring reimbursement for those costs. You know. When it comes to things like having the police at, you know, at an, at an event to help direct traffic or parking or things like that where. It. Kinda serves a larger purpose of, of, you know, kinda reducing chaos and having things kinda spill out onto the streets and having a police presence there. You know, kinda deters bad behavior, that kind of thing. You can, I mean, that's a justifiable public expenditure.
Cause I was actually gonna ask you about that because I went to a concert on Sunday, a lot of St. Paul police officers helping direct traffic.
They may be paid on.
Well, that's, well.
Under a contract.
And I was wondering, is that something like, hey, that contract with Excel Energy Center or the, you know, outfit that, put that together, did they? Incur a cost and they just slip that over to the PD and say like, here's the cover for that kind of stuff, is that?
A lot of, in, you know, for larger events like that, at least in my experience with other cities, you know. It's a contractual overtime situation.
Okay.
You know, like where you'll see a police officer in Target. Where they're there under a contract and being paid an hourly rate. I think the chief would know more about that than I, but. You know, where it's an event here in Dayton for, you know, fireworks at the park or something like that. That is put on by, or, you know, or an event that's put on by a private entity that, you know, isn't there to make a profit. But, you know, it's, it does help reduce chaos in the streets and, and that sort of thing, where there is a legitimate public. Purpose that, you know, could be served by having the police there, but not doing it under a contractual overtime kind of situation.
So like the Bunce Theater event, because I don't think they charge for that. I think it's a free event to go to. That would be okay to waive the fees because it's, we, one could argue it's a benefit to the community as a whole to have a, a play in the community. It's free, doesn't benefit, there's no financial benefit for a specific organization, but it does help better manage the traffic on Fernbrook, which is already a bad road. Is that fair?
I think that's fair. I mean, I think that it, that, you think it's squishy, but it's, and it is. This, the way that this can be analyzed, and it really is kind of on a case by case basis. You know, there's not a black and white, hard and fast rule that you have, that you can say, you know. can say, you know. It, and it goes back to Councilmember Rashad, what you were, the concerns you have about the, the factors that are listed there that could go into your consideration of whether to, whether it meets the, the actual three-part legal test of, of what's a public purpose expenditure. I don't know if that helps, but that's sort of some of the rationale behind what's, what's in here. And it's consistent with, you know, the case law that's, that's applicable.
Yeah, well, I think that, that clarifies it a bit. You know, it's still a little bit muddy to me.
And we can, we can still amend this.
But, I mean, well, and, and I understand the format, you know, is driven a lot by what's law. And that's different than maybe in other businesses. I'm used to seeing policies where the policy statement is real brief.
Yeah.
Right? In the healthcare world, you'd say, first, do no harm. Okay, there's, there's our policy, right?
Review your pet injury.
And then, and then the 27 pages that follow that is the procedure.
Right.
How do we, how do we accomplish that?
Right.
And this is, this is kind of all blended together, I guess.
I mean, if you, if you want a different format, I mean, I'm happy to, to rework it to, to, you know, kind of fit what you're looking for. I mean, this is just kind of.
My, my answer to that is I don't know because, I mean, if we, in a perfect world, right, all of our policies would follow the same format.
Mm-hmm.
And so you know what you're looking for when you go find one.
Right.
Okay, this is the piece I need. What's the policy or what's the procedure?
Right.
And I don't, I don't know that we.
And you know, and there, we could, you know, for the, where we have examples, you know, you know, there's, we could add some, some meat to that structure, you know, to that skeleton and, and, you know, sort of flesh it out a little bit more to make it, to, to give that more detail if you really wanted it. And, and we could add, if you wanted to have a procedure for, you know, how, like, a, a nonprofit organization or a member of the public would come to the council to make a request, you know, does it go through staff? You know, you, you, we could put that in here if you wanted it. So, I mean, it's, it's, this isn't, this isn't set in stone.
Yeah, I think in the past, we've, up to a certain level, I think, you know, Teresa's budget, well, it's not Teresa's budget anymore, but she can kind of make some of those decisions. But I, I, I kind of put it at a level of other expenditures. If it reaches a certain point, we, then we take that power from staff, but I, I don't have a problem with staff making those decisions up to some dollar more. But. I guess we'll get into that in the next item, so. Or at least some of it.
So do you, do you want to take, you, do you want me to take a swipe at, you know, amending this further?
I think it's fine.
I think it's fine.
Yeah.
And I like, just because I like the examples at the end. That's helpful, I think, for when we look at some major things that are okay, things that aren't okay. I think that's helpful, just from a adding extra guidance to the sniff test pieces you were talking about.
Yeah.
So, I like it. I'm good. Other than, I think the word and, I don't know if it needs to be, might want to be added under, after benefits the community as a whole, because it's after the third one as well, so I don't know. Maybe we don't need it, maybe we do. Just makes it clear that all three have to be met, not just two. That's my two cents.
We good? All right. On to item K.
Do you want to take a vote to approve it?
All should approve it.
One second.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Curious five to zero. Now we can move on to item K.
Mayor members of the council, we have Operation Zero that will be happening out at the Magnus Veterans Foundation, who, exactly the piece we just discussed, looking to waive the fees for this fundraiser.
So based on what we just discussed, this does not pass all three, because this is an event to directly profit an individual company, correct? Or nonprofit in this case? It's a paid event, you have to pay to get into it, right?
I don't know any details, but, all right. So the, yeah, the Operation Zero, from what we gathered, is it's a nonprofit that focuses on raising awareness to prevent veteran suicide.
I like the cause, please don't get me started.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a paid event. I have no idea. Amy may know.
Um, I can get a for sure answer on that. I believe there is an entry fee.
Yeah. So that in and of itself makes it not a public event?
Not a public, yeah.
Well, it would, it would have to meet those three criteria that we just talked about. And the, the third one about not, you know, having solely as its, as its purpose, you know, a private profit-making purpose, it's, you know, in a situation like this where it's a nonprofit for another nonprofit, I mean, it's, it's, it's squishy, to use your word, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's, it, it, it's unbalanced, it's, you know, you would look at, is it a funk, is it a core governmental function and all these other parts? And so it's up to you to decide whether it does or doesn't.
So you don't think the fact that they charge a fee automatically says it's not a public event?
Correct. I don't think that just because there's a, a, a ticket price, especially if the, if the, if it's not, I mean, if it was a ticket to pay for, you know, for like a concert that was just some, you know, touring company of some, you know?
Oh, sure.
If it was a private entity, where it's a nonprofit, it gets a little, it is a little less, it is a little less clear. But I think that.
Could you say like waiving the fee for residents of Dayton? Would you like to kind of find the?
Yeah.
Really see through a motor, something like that, you say?
Well, driver's license.
Everybody's a resident then.
I don't, I don't know.
I mean, it's a fundraiser for, for a good charity.
And if I could ask a question, you know, the fees that we're talking about are like licensing fees, right? I mean, it's.
No. No, they're asking for, they are asking for police services to be waived.
Okay.
Along with fireworks and a large assembly permit.
Okay.
So the fees for the large assembly permit is a fee that's related to the licensing or the ability to have the large assembly. Fireworks is another probably similar, similar one, but we would have staff out there related to the fireworks. And then also police services are, that's the biggest one. So they're asking for all the police services to be waived, which is $125 an hour for contract services.
So it's a fairly large expenditure.
That's correct.
Well, that's kind of.
Depends on how you quantify large. This is what the, some people, to some people, largest is 300 bucks, to other people, largest is 10,000. It just depends on.
Right, but I mean, so it's not just the, it's not just a $50 permit fee?
No. No.
This is going to be a couple grand.
Yeah, we're talking thousands of dollars.
What did you just say?
Thousands of dollars, I'm guessing, in time, labor, and, and waive. I think that's what it came up to. We talked, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm misremembering. We talked about this before, the time for the police, then I think there was the fees, I think the fireworks fee was, was not cheap to be there because that includes the fire chief's time. Go ahead. Sorry.
Police services, it all depends on how many officers are required to be at the event. If it's one officer for eight hours, you're probably looking at right around a thousand bucks.
Yeah. But the chief police, fire department will have to be there because of the fireworks. So you got his time, plus the waive of the permit fee, which I don't remember what the, I don't remember what the fireworks permit fee was. Two hundred.
Two hundred for the, that and then?
Hundred dollars for the fireworks permit.
Yeah, so then you're, you're talking probably staff time, I'll say, yeah, we're probably 500 total with everything.
But it's a community event to the extent that, that the public can attend, but not just walk up and, and participate in.
Correct.
I think that's where you're going.
It's a $20 entry.
It's how?
Twenty dollars.
Twelve and under is free.
That's good.
How would this have been different than Riverfest? I mean, the same thing, wouldn't it? Basically?
There's no entry fee?
There's no entry fee for Riverfest, is there?
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, there was. It, it, all these nonprofits, I mean, however you, I don't know, I, I, it's not a cut and dry answer.
I mean, this is not a cut and dry city event, for sure.
Well, my concern is, is that if we go down this road, we will kill off all the events.
No, no, I'm, I'm not, yeah. But it doesn't pass the sniff test.
And technically, this issue will be resolved at this location.
Say what?
The.
Well, for the large assembly permit, there would be.
Right.
So the fireworks permit.
Right. And the time. Well.
No, they'd still have to pay for the time. Yeah, so Magnus is applied for in an event center. And so that would eliminate the large assembly need because they would be expected to have it.
Yeah, but that's.
The fireworks.
Mayor.
Correct, yeah. The large assembly is the smaller cost. Fireworks is a little more, not much more, but police services is the big one.
Yeah.
And, and fireworks, sorry.
When I met with Magnus, they had mentioned that they're moving away, more and more away from these kind of events, not because of the changes we've made, but just because of their fundraising. It's not the most, what they mentioned, I mean, the biggest tie, it's a big time sync for the events. It's better for them just to work directly with corporates and get, get the money that way. And so he had said, when I met with him, that they're going to apply for the permit, but they don't even know how much sugar they're going to use it. They just want to have it in case, but they're not planning on doing like a summer series of concerts again.
No.
Because the return on, on.
Wasn't good.
Wasn't good based upon their volunteers' time and really drained the volunteers a lot.
Sure.
So.
I'm just saying that for an event that the public was able to go to, this will kill it. So if we're.
Well, it won't kill Bunce. Right? That's the event the public go to, because they don't charge entry fees.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm talking about Magnus. I'm talking about this event. If we're talking about thousands of dollars, I don't see them doing this event, but.
Well, as far as if we're talking about charging them back the fees?
Well, that's what we're talking about. If we did IK, is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, and I, to me, we, the more events we can have in the city, the better. And I get, I mean, if it was, you know, a lot more blunt, you know, that this is a, like a for-profit event, I think I'd be more, you know, then I'd have no problem with it. It's just that these, these nonprofits, that they, I don't know, these fees, just wipe them out. So, and to me, it's, I consider it a legitimate function because it promotes some public events. So.
I don't disagree. It benefits the community as a whole, promotes a public event, and it is, well, the next question is, is it directly related to a function of government? Talk about that one. The one that I got caught up on was the, is it, it is not primary to benefit a private And I like the cause, just to be 100% clear. I just, we, we just talked about this, I just want to make sure that we're following the rules that are there and it's, it's clearly it's gray. So, I don't know.
You know, I think one of the, the parts that we have in the policy that's, you know, from the various courts that have looked at public purpose expenditures, you know, it says that, you know, there have been cases where a court has looked at it and said, you know, activities that serve the public health, safety, general welfare, security, prosperity, and contentment of residents for their public purpose. You know, so that's, that's perhaps another way to look at those three criteria, you I think, I think the most challenging one in this specific situation is the, directly related to the functions of government. You could take the approach that, you know, it is a government function to, you know, if, if a large event is going to occur, it's a government function to have police or fire there to, you know, maintain order and, you know, maintain the safety of, of how the fireworks are, are deployed, you know? So it's possible, I think, to, you know, to do the analysis and, and perhaps still find that it does satisfy the public purpose test because, you know, in, in, you know, broadly construing it, there's the words there, Mayor, that you called out. You know, it's just, this is, this is kind of the way that, that nonprofits sometimes need the, need the support, you know? I mean, obviously, it's, it's your decision.
So you're not worried about number three, you're worried about number two?
I think two is the most challenging, but I still think, you know, based, like just what I just said, I think, I think it's, I think it's possible to get there.
Okay.
But it's, but it's, it's your decision to, to make that, you know, to weigh these factors and how you want to analyze it in, in this specific request.
I've got one question real quick. Do we keep the parking lot at Public Works open 24/7?
I mean, it's accessible, right? Yeah.
So the fireworks piece, anyone could go watch it from the, the Public Works building. It'll be high enough up if it then fits the benefit at all.
Yeah, I think that, you know, as it relates to the functions of government piece, public safety is a function of government. We're providing public safety by monitoring the fireworks.
Yeah.
Right.
Set up, making sure that that's not unsafe, they're not shooting to man houses or whatever.
Right.
Right, you got a bunch of bikes leaving onto North Diamond Lake Road.
Right.
So police presence there is a public safety to, that benefits the community, that that's, you know, kept orderly, so.
Because if this, if this event would go forward regardless of, you know?
Yeah.
Of, of whether the, the city waives the fees, the, you know, the public would still have an interest in having the police and fire presence there to, you know, for those reasons that you just enumerated, Councilmember.
Can I ask one question, which is if this was not a not-for-profit organization, would that change the analysis in your mind?
It, it probably would.
Yes, I don't disagree with it. No, I'm asking from a legal point of view.
I think it probably would.
Okay.
Because.
Because if it doesn't, then what's the point of having the fireworks fee? If everyone's just going to ask for it to be removed and we automatically approve them all, like, this is where, I, again, I have no problem voting that we approve this and I'll motion that we approve this and move forward, but I just want to make sure that if this comes back and it's, Greco wants to have a 25th anniversary for their, you know?
I, and I've said this in the past, I think some of these fees for, like, the large assembly thing, I think for nonprofits, I'd routinely waive them. Nonprofits just struggle in general and they're there for the public. Therefore, Greco is not.
Yeah. Greco is a different deal. It's a for-profit company.
Yeah. And that's, to me, that's a separate, it's a separate question, so.
Jay, Mayor, I, I am a member of Magnus, I could speak to some of this stuff.
You're not a representative of Magnus, though.
True.
I don't, I'll, I'll.
Motion. Yeah, I'll motion that we approve this request.
Where we at?
We could have done that a half an hour ago.
That's God.
I declare these good scats because we might get more and more of these.
No offense, Amy, just add an attorney and mutt the waters.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. All right.
Yeah, Mayor members of council, Jason will, he's got negative 25 minutes, so. Good luck.
Time travel.
Yep.
We have talked about this briefly at the last meeting. And so I will try to run through this quickly, but just a little background. So the project authorized as part of the consent agenda for the utility extensions under Territorial Road is in the area highlighted on the screen between Dayton Parkway and under Territorial Road is in the area highlighted on the screen between Dayton Parkway and Brockton Lane. This is just what the improvements themselves would look like, it'd be the dashed extensions of the existing sewer and water lines to reach Brockton to the west, and then also the reconstruction of the street along that portion. This item involves separating out or constructing the portion of the water main highlighted here early. The reason for that is to provide a water supply, or a water service to the Dayton Storage Site that is looking to construct earlier. This would expedite that service and therefore allow them to not have to construct onsite supply and storage for their fire suppression. So there's a benefit to that property owner by accelerating this part of the project. So the scope is to do just the water main extension, it's about 1,500 feet. It would be directionally drilled as to preserve the road through there, it's a more expensive method of doing it, but without the costs of the road, it's, it, it limits disruption and, and limits the, the scope of the work. We would be looking at doing 2024 construction, which is a fast turnaround on the project, but we believe we could do it, they can do this later in the year, this type of work, without the excavations, without too much trouble. Our initial, initial project costs, we're estimating about $450,000 for this part of it. Dayton Storage, the property owner would actually fund the entire project. So he would provide a, an escrow account at the city of $500,000, that would be used to fund the project. Any unused balance at the end of the project would then be returned to the property owner.
And that was just to take care of their fire suppression?
Yes, this-
So how did, Marty, just out of curiosity, how much did our fire suppression at Public Works cost?
I couldn't tell you.
I can't, I can't believe it was anywhere near that.
I don't believe it was anywhere near that, but-
Ah, okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the system-
The system is a little bit different, it's a lot, it's a lot bigger, they had to go underground, which has more excavation and then footings, and it's under a structure.
And this is work that we, we could save, right? I mean, this is, this, if, if-
If this is constructed, if it's not constructed with the project we're talking here, it would be into the larger project.
Oh.
So it would be cheaper than the $450,000, but it would still be an additional cost to that project.
Okay.
So, we do have, just to note, we do have verbal agreement with the property owner to supply this escrow. We're in progress of working through an escrow agreement with them, just to finalize the, the terms of that.
Fair.
The costs that would be applied to the escrow would include your services?
The entire, the entire cost, yes.
Forty-seven.
So it'd be the construction, the design services, any permitting that would be required, any other indirect costs. There's going to be some bidding involved, so there'll be some publication costs and whatnot, but all project costs are-
And that's in your $450 estimate?
Yes, yep.
What if it goes over the $500?
We did set it as a not to exceed, or at least that was staff's recommendation, so if it did go over, the city would pick up the balance of it.
The next question I have is if we get the, if we go through the point where you guys do the work, we go for the bids, the bids come in, it puts over $450, and we just say, we're not going to cover the remaining balance, are they still on the hook to covering your fees up to that point?
Um, well, we haven't written the agreement yet, so we could write it that way.
I think that should be included, because that's part of the finalizing the costs, they know what the, they, they have a right to know what the costs are and say, okay, we're out, we don't want to cover that.
Yeah.
But we shouldn't be on the hook for your costs when they're the one driving the project forward.
Sure. Yeah, we can, we can go through that certainly, and, and, I mean, on the other side of that, they, they need some level of a commitment-
Yeah, I was going to say they may not.
So they don't continue with their project, planning on this extension, and then us just saying, no, it's not going to happen.
I mean, they'll know once the bid comes in, just what we'll know.
They will, they will, I just, I don't know the timing of that, but we can work through that with them. That can all become part of the agreement until both sides are comfortable with it.
Yeah, so from staff's perspective is that we want to have some sort of, again, they want to have some sort of reliability that's going to happen.
Yeah.
This is a huge asset for us to get that much linear feat of water main extension, for essentially, even if we had to pay a small amount of dollars, it's well worth our investment, and it also helps out every other property owner, because that gets watered that much closer down.
And we're talking, it looks like your services are 25K or something, give or take.
Correct, yeah. So, like I said, the property owner needs to have some sort of assurance, and we came